Willmet, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us tonight. As I said, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Willmet. We'll call the matters in the order in which they appear on the printed agenda, and there are copies of the agenda on the table by the door, so you may want to have one so you can follow along to see when your matter will be called. Now, if you plan to address this tonight, we ask that you please come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone, and tell us who you are and where you live, as that may be relevant to the matter at hand. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone so we can hear you, and because everything you say and everything we say is being recorded. And from those recordings, minutes of the meeting are prepared, and these minutes are available both at Village Hall and hard copy form and also on our website at willmet.com. Also, our village board meetings are televised on local access Channel 6 and on the Internet, and if you look up, you can actually see the cameras in the room. The red light indicates which camera is active. By televising our meetings, we make it easy for our neighbors in the community to follow the proceedings of the village board, to see the types of matters that come before us, the questions that we ask, and the policies we create. And you can find archived videos of village board and other local government meetings at willmet.com. And I would like to personally thank all those residents who tune in regularly to follow the workings of their local government. Now, before each meeting, the board receives a packet of agenda materials, and these materials are also posted on willmet.com on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and any other interested parties can review the very same materials that the board members receive. This week's packet contained 1,664 pages, and you guys are probably aware of that because that's why you're all here tonight. And we've had an opportunity to review all the information in the agenda packet, so if you do plan to address this tonight, we ask that you tell us the most relevant, most material, most important points that you'd really like us to focus on. Finally, we are a community of neighbors, and as such, we want our meetings to be as civil and courteous as possible, so as a courtesy to those around you, please take this time to turn off your cell phones and mobile devices, and while we're turning off our phones, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Wolf?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Plunkett?
Here.
Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Trustee Kersman?
Here.
President Blinsky?
Here. We do have a quorum. As some of you may know, we are currently short-staffed on the board. We had a resignation, so Trustee Leonard's spot, or his former, former Trustee Leonard's spot, is open right there. The next item on the agenda is Item 2, Public Comment. During public comment, we ask if any member of the audience would like to address us on an item which is not on the agenda. Members of the audience may address the board on matters which are on tonight's agenda when the particular matter is called. Now, as you can see, there are many people here present at the meeting tonight, and I'd like to move this meeting along as efficiently as possible, and since public comment refers to items that aren't on this evening's agenda, I'm going to defer public comment until the end of the meeting tonight, which is permitted under the village's rules. So we'll move on to Item 3, which is the Consent Agenda. As described on the printed agenda, items which are routine business that are normally not debated by the village board are placed on the consent agenda. And all items that begin with the number 3 are on the consent agenda, and so tonight we have a long consent agenda because we did not have a meeting during spring break. We did not have a quorum, so we basically got a double-load tonight. So beginning on page 1 with Item 3.1, all the items on page 2, all of the items on page 3, all of the items on page 4, and the first 3 items on page 5 ending with Item 3.39. Items on the consent agenda are up for approval tonight, and if an item is not removed from the agenda, the item will be approved and it will not be discussed. So I'd like to begin by asking if there's any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda. May I see a show of hands? Yes, sir. Come on up to the podium, please.
Bob Davis, 227 Kilpatrick. I would like to remove 3.26, 27, 31, 32, and 33, or we can discuss it in some general terms. I was trying to get ahold of the packet to see what those items are in detail, and it would not download from the site. So if you want to just postpone it?
What items are those?
26, 27, 31, 32, 33.
Okay, they're removed from the consent agenda. Anyone else? Okay. Are there any items that any of the trustees would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, so may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and again, the consent agenda removing items 3.26, 3.27, 3.31, 3.32, and 3.33 from the consent agenda. So it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. Okay, so the motion carries the consent agenda has been adopted. If you are here for an item on the consent agenda, it was just approved, and to clarify for people who are here tonight for items, again, all the items beginning with the number 3 have been approved, and that includes land use item 3.10, 3.11, and 3.12. So there will be no further discussion of those items or any of the other items on the consent agenda, so you're free to leave. Of course, you're more than welcome to stay for the meeting tonight, and we'll give a pause here because I know there's some people that are going to be leaving. It's early, there's time to stop by one of our restaurants before heading home, so please do that, okay?
All right, next is Item 4, which is Report of Officers. So we'll start with the report from our village manager, Mr. Frenzer.
No report, Mr. President.
Next is our report from our Corporation Council, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Next item is Item 5, which is the Report of the Liquor Control Commissioner. There's no report tonight, so we'll move on to our standing committee reports. The, so the items that you removed from the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Given that we're going to begin with Item 6.11, those will come up at around midnight tonight, I'm suspecting. So why don't we, I'm going to entertain a motion to table them to the next meeting, and we can refer to them then. Is there anything that the staff is concerned about that has to be approved?
Give us just a second, please.
All I really want is to see the packet.
I wish you--
Come on up to the microphone for a second.
I'm not objecting to them, I just wanted to see the packet because the site will not download them. The file is too large.
So you don't have an issue with us approving them tonight?
I don't particularly have an issue with approving them. What I have an issue with is that as part of open meetings, you're supposed to be able to see what's going on and go to the packet if necessary and look. We've always been able to do that.
Right.
And with the large, I gather, the large size of the packet this time, that is not true.
Well, we can have one of our staff members try to print that up for you now. Obviously, if someone has a problem with downloading, depends on a lot of things. I was able to download it all. If there's a problem, obviously, please reach out to us ahead of time before a meeting, and we'll make sure that you get any materials that you want in advance. But if you'd like, we can have them printed out now so you can look at them, or leave with them, or whatever you'd like to do.
Okay.
So, do you, my question to you is, do you want these, do you want to review the materials so that you can make comment on these items?
Possibly.
Okay, so then we'll table them unless there's anything. Is there anything on here? Ms. Berger, would you approach? Are there any items on here that can't wait for two weeks?
I believe Item 3.32 is the Loyola Traffic Study. Is that correct?
Yes.
That one is time-sensitive because we want to get our existing traffic counts performed before school is out of session, so we would like to have that approved tonight.
Okay, on that one, I just had an ignorant question. Why are we studying it now when we've pretty much approved everything?
That was the deal in the, in the agreement, was that we were going to study it, and then if there wasn't an improvement, Loyola was going to have to take action.
Oh, okay, well, I'm fine. I'm fine with that.
Okay. The other ones can wait?
Yes.
Okay. So 332 is what committee?
Table the other 3 first, and then 332.
Okay, all right. So this is Municipal Services. So Trustee Wolf, can I get a--
Do you want to just defer those to the end of the agenda? If we can, I can have staff provide--
No, let's, 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 let's table, let's table 326, 27, 32, and 33. So if you would make that motion--
Okay, I move that we table Items 3.26, 27, 31, and 33 to the next village board meeting.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, so those items are tabled, and then if you would make a motion to approve Item 3.32--
Sure, I move that we approve Item 3.32, the approval of a contract in the amount not to exceed $25,359 with Alfred Benish and Company Chicago for the Loyola Academy Expansion Traffic Study.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? All is in favor. Roll call, or--
Roll call.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. Okay, so the motion carries the contract's approved. All right. So we've handled everything that came off of consent. So let's move on to the standing committee reports. The Land Use Committee, Trustee Leonard was the chair, Trustee Sullivan is sort of sitting in instead now. So Trustee Sullivan, if you would give the Land Use Committee report.
We have one item that is proposed this evening, and I make a motion regarding, or a motion to approve Item 6.11, which is a Plan Commission Report, case number 2018P1 at 1925 Willmet Avenue, regarding a request for, by Housing Opportunity Development Corporation for approval of a planned unit development, preliminary plan and special use to permit the construction of a multifamily building containing approximately 16 affordable rental apartments located in the NR Neighborhood Retail Zoning District in conformance with the plan submitted, and this use will run with the use.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I believe we're going to begin the discussion here with Mr. Adler. Is that correct? So Mr. Adler has a presentation. And there were, these handouts were at the door as well, is that correct?
No.
They were not? Okay, all right. Sorry.
I'm going to really quickly go through the planned unit development process, and then a little bit about the process which has us here today. The planned unit development process is a regulatory process that offers flexibility in the development of land, combines the zoning board, the plan commission, and the appearance review commission processes. It's heard by the plan commission as a special use with the final approval resting with the village board. That makes the plan commission a recommending body, is not, they do not make binding decisions. The zoning relief to be granted in a PUD typically requires some form of public benefit to be provided. It is up to, it is up to the applicant to decide whether they want to use the planned unit development process, or whether they want to go through the traditional zoning process. The planned unit development process, more detail about it can be found in Chapter 6 of the Village Code if people are interested. It's divided into three phases. There's a pre-application phase, there's a preliminary approval phase, and that's where we're at tonight. We're in the half-point of that. The first, the first portion of that preliminary approval phase was the plan commission reviewing this on March 6th, and then the final phase is a phase that involves staff in the village board for final approval. During the preliminary approval phase, the plan commission received a presentation from the applicant, took public testimony, they deliberated and formulated a recommendation to the village board, which the village board has tonight. The village board will also receive a presentation from the applicant and take public testimony. This is a little bit of the timeline for this particular application. HODC originally submitted an application in September of 2015. That was heard by the village plan commission on November 3rd, 2015. That at that time was for a 20-unit, 10-one-bedroom, 10-studio, affordable building. After that meeting on November 16th, based on community comments and the village suggestion, HODC withdrew that preliminary planned unit application. They then held a number of community meetings, and on October 16th, 2016, they submitted a new application. And again, on about a year later, October 27th, 2017, they revised their application because of the original application was looking to have access easement or service access easement and parking easement on neighboring property, and when that was not able to go forward, they amended the application. The plan commission was originally scheduled to hear this on January 16th. There was a lack of quorum due to unforeseen circumstances, and on March 6th, the plan commission reviewed this and recommended by a vote of 4 to 1 to the village board to approve it. What is considered a public benefit, a number of things are, they include community amenities, including gardens, outdoor seating, public art, preservation of historically significant structures, preservation of environmental features, public open space, innovative stormwater management, affordable or senior housing set-asides, and the provision of accessible dwelling units above and beyond what code requires. This is a list of the public benefits as presented by HODC. In HODC's application, they indicated that they are providing innovative stormwater management techniques, they are providing affordable housing set-asides, they are providing accessible features in the building beyond what the ADA or other applicable codes require, and they believe that they're using sustainable design and architecture similar to LEED or another environmental certification building program. This is the requested modifications that HODC is requesting. The first one is a floor area ratio variation of 1.36 compared to the permitted 1.0. They're asking for a building story variation from the 2 and 1/2 stories to 3 stories. They're looking for a portion of the buffer yard to the south to be 0 feet when there's a 10-foot requirement. The zoning ordinance requires 24 spaces minimum for the 16 units, and they're providing 20. The zoning ordinance also requires for multi-unit or, or units above ground floor for half of those to be enclosed within the building, and while 16 of the spaces are under the building or partially under the building, none of them are technically enclosed, and the ordinance also requires in the NR District that all parking spaces that are related to residential use be provided below grade. That concludes my presentation.
Any, any, any quick questions for Mr. Adler?
Would you mind going back--
Trustee Sullivan, to your benefits, the public benefits slide.
Maybe one back.
One back, the whole list.
Yep, the whole list. Innovative stormwater management. How is that any different than a, if we came in with a normal development where we require people to bring it up to our standards today and MWRD and--
Sure.
What do you mean by innovative?
It's my understanding that when you compare what they're proposing to do compared to what we would require of a, let's say, a by-right development or a development that wasn't needing to provide public benefit, this is maybe a little beyond that, but it really is meeting the requirements. I think what the applicant said at the plan commission meeting is that they're doing a bioswale, which is listed as a innovative technique, but the way that they're handling it does not far exceed what we would require of any development.
And my question, it wasn't necessarily what the applicant said, it's why is that in there if any development we do, we're going to have improvements to water management?
Right, but I don't know if we would necessarily require bioswales, rain gardens, or similar techniques. The other point, it also might be, and could talk to engineering about this, some of the ways in which we look at handling stormwater have changed, and maybe even since that list was put together, and while that list might have been something that was maybe helpful five or 10 years ago, maybe it's, if these are items that we're currently requiring of all developments, then we probably need to change that.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Adler? Thank you, Mr. Adler. Don't go far. I suspect you're not done tonight yet.
John, please go down.
All right, so our Corporation Council has some guidance as well for the board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the application before the village board tonight is obviously for a planned unit development for an affordable housing apartment facility located within the village in a neighborhood retail district. The use for the property is designed to provide affordable housing to certain qualified individuals, which then triggers certain protections under federal law, including the Fair Housing Act, potentially, certain state laws, and like any other development, our village's own laws are triggered. So as with any application, discriminatory practices in granting zoning relief is forbidden. Accordingly, commentary about the actual or perceived status, practice or expression of potential users and potential tenants' race, color, religion, age, national origin, ancestry, sex, disability, sexual orientation, marital status, parental status, military discharge status, source of income or housing status, or the actual perceived association with such a person should not be considered by this board in making its decision.
Any questions for Mr. Stein? Let's just make sure we're still on the air here.
We are.
Okay, great. All right, will the applicant please come forward? Welcome. Now, I have just a short thing to say. So the village board's obviously reviewed the report from the plan commission, so they're familiar with the proposed project. So you can take some time to describe the project, but please, you know, focus on the relief requested, the public benefit. It also would be helpful to talk about your experience with similar projects and your track record and the like. So just, we don't need, we don't need to spend 30 minutes going through the architectural drawings because we've all gone through those already, so. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Absolutely. My name is Richard Koenig. I'm the Executive Director of Housing Opportunity Development Corporation. I have a very brief 10-minute presentation to go over a couple of items, if that's okay?
Great.
Let me just figure out how to set this up real quick.
Okay.
Thank you. So briefly, like, as you said, the, the project has been presented, and I want very briefly this evening to go over a few issues. A few questions were raised at the plan commission hearing. I've heard some questions since then, and just wanted to go over a couple of items, provide some clarification. Of course, there'll be plenty of time for additional questions, but I just sort of wanted to go over briefly a few issues, including organization, occupancy, operations, so that we can cover some of those items, get some of those items out of the way. To clarify, Housing Opportunity Development Corporation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. As a mission-driven organization, we are trying to provide affordable housing in Chicago's northern suburbs. We recognize that North Shore affordable housing can be an oxymoron, and we are one of the few groups actually trying to, to create this. Any funds that we make, any money that we quote-unquote "make" on the project, go into the next project to help fund the organization and provide benefits for the, for the community. The organization is comprised of board members from throughout the northern suburbs. Many of our board members in the past have been from Willmet. In fact, our very first offices were in Willmet many years ago, and we have experience. We've developed over 300 units in the past 20 years, including over 22 projects, and several projects in the pipeline that we're going to be closing this year. We currently manage over 250 units in 20 different locations in eight different suburbs. Those of you who have been following some of the dialogue may have heard of one problem property, but you may not have heard of other properties that we are working on. The organization currently is managing, as I said, properties all over the northern suburbs, and part of the reason you haven't heard about those projects is because they are so well-managed, and because they're operating, and because there's not much to talk about with them. They're boring, people just live there. What's nice about them is they don't have to pay as much rent as they would otherwise, but we do have a track record as an organization of not only creating affordable housing, developing affordable units, with many more units in the pipeline, many communities very happy with the developments that we've done, but we have this track record of managing buildings very well, and people just living their lives. Our property management department, we've been managing properties for almost 20 years now. We've been expanding and growing the agency. Back when I started, it was basically just me running the organization, and I've continued to hire people to do the jobs I didn't want to do. One of the first jobs I didn't want to do was doing property management. It's a hard, hard enough job when you're doing all the other work, but what we've been able to do over the past few years is hire extremely experienced professional property management staff with the organization. I think one of the best decisions I made was to not be involved in property management anymore. I think my staff is very happy about that. I keep out of the way. Our asset management director was here at the plan commission meeting, and it had just been announced by the State Housing Finance Agency that she was nominated and awarded the Manager of the Year. So I'm out of the way, she's in charge of property management, and now we're an award-winning organization, so we're taking advantage and very proud of that. But we do have a number of managers on staff doing property management, doing maintenance, and are looking to add additional staff. We extend to expand the, expand the organization. One of the problem properties that people have come up, if you read in materials information about some of the properties that we manage, this particular building is Claridge Apartments. It was previously a rooming house located at 319 Dumpster in Evanston. When we took over the building--
I'm sorry, what's, what's a rooming house?
It was literally rooms where people slept. There was, there was one bathroom per floor with a couple of toilets in that room. The kitchen was one room with a stove and a microwave, and refrigerators lining the walls with padlocks around them. We were able to purchase the building and gut the entire building and make 48 individual apartments. The units are small. You can see in the middle picture there, they, each unit does have its own kitchen, its own bathroom, so people are able to live independently on their own. It's no more shared space, no more shared facility. You can see a picture of the building there. It is a four-story building. We were able to add an elevator. There had not been an elevator previous in the building. We added sprinklers to the building, made it safer, made it much more livable, added a community room so there's space for people to get out of their apartments. In addition to being able to be located, it's two blocks from the L, two blocks from the lake, two blocks from Northwestern University, and a great location. So we're able to save that building, and the people who have lived there are people that have few other housing options. If you're familiar with the term single-room occupancy, or SRO, it essentially functions as independent living for one person. There are no couples there. Everybody's a single person living on their own.
Same tenants post-remodel, or?
When we took over the building, about, over half the tenants moved back in. So when we did the rehab, we moved everybody out, got them a new apartment, moved them throughout the community wherever they were interested in going, made up the difference between the rent that they were paying and the rent that they needed to pay, gutted the building all the way down to the dirt, dirt that hadn't been exposed for over 100 years. Everything brand-new within, inside the shell of the building. The front is historic, so we had a historic rehab that was done on it, and moved everybody back who was interested in coming back.
Is that considered low income, or what are your qualified--
Correct. The building is considered low income. All residents who live there are considered low income. They're under 60% of the median income, and they're all single individuals. So we did have a number of residents move back. We've had additional residents, and have been operating it since 2002, was when the building was completed.
Please.
I had two questions. So one is, what's the size of those, you know, what's the average size of those units?
Yeah, they're about 200 square feet.
200 square feet, okay. And then my second question was, you kind of building on what Trustee Sullivan said. So you were asking if they're all low-income residents who live there. Are some of those, so is this Section 8 housing in this particular?
It's not Section 8 housing.
Okay.
Section 8 housing would be someone has a rental certificate, and the government makes up a portion of their rent. In this building, there are, I think there are one or two people today who have a Section 8 voucher that can go anywhere, but what's makes it affordable is that the rents are very low.
Okay.
The rents are between $400 and $500 per month.
Okay.
So part of the, many of the developments that we do, because the rents are so significantly below market, there's not a need for that additional rental assistance. Tenants pay the entire rent themselves, so it's not, it's not as necessary because the rents are so low.
How did you, how did HODC come across that property? How'd you find that?
Interesting story. All of the properties that we've done have an interesting story about how they came to us. us. Essentially, a friend of a friend knew the owner, knew that they wanted to get out of the building, knew that there were some issues, had some conversations with the city about whether they were interested in us taking it over, and we were able to work with the gentleman who owned it, who essentially held it together with duct tape and gum, and are able to get the financing pulled together to be able to buy it from him.
So the Claridge Apartments, the tenants, I was reading, are they supported, just like supportive tenants? Can you, can you explain?
So the concept of supportive housing is sort of a new term of art in the affordable housing world. When this project was done, that really wasn't necessarily a terminology that was used for that. So the residents are not required to have any level of disability. They're simply required to be low-income and single, a single individual, one person in each unit. So they don't have to have any disabilities. Some people do have disabilities. Some people work with agencies. We do partner with agencies in Evanston, Connections, Housing Options, Thresholds, Trilogy, those types of groups. They know of the housing. They have clients who need that type of housing, so they're able to work with them on an individual basis, but that's really up to the tenants and the agencies. We have a good reciprocal relationship with them.
I'm sorry, I do have one more. I think you might have addressed this when you started, but when did you rehab this?
It was completed in 2002.
Okay.
February 2002 is when we reopened.
And so you'd indicated that, you know, this has been, obviously you've had many, many successful housing units, so I'm very impressed by that. And you indicated that you've had some, obviously this is maybe, you've had some struggles with this particular property. And was that prior to when you had done the renovation, or after, or...
Since, since the renovation.
Since the renovation.
It's, it's a very interesting building.
Yep.
We have a lot of characters who live there. It's, it's a, it's a challenging building. It's 20% of our units and 80% of our time.
Interesting, okay.
It is a challenge. Some of the things that we've been able to do to improve the building and, and try and improve safety, and improve the ability to serve the residents who are living there, were we able to install security cameras. I had personally resisted that for a long time, and had been recommended for a while, and I thought invaded people's privacy, but when the police chief said, "You need to install security cameras," I listened. The city was able to help us fund those. They were able, they had some money that was available, and now every building that we've completed, that we built from new, includes security camera features. The other thing was to have the ability to have a public bathroom. There wasn't any space. City staff were able to find space in the building for us and help us find funding to make that public bathroom available. What that essentially does is it allows more case management onsite, so folks that come there can spend more time than just running to the Starbucks if they need to be there for several hours. Our property managers, maintenance folks, caseworkers have the ability to just use a restroom publicly there. So it's, makes it a little easier to spend a lot more time in the building. Again, learned that lesson, and all the buildings we have now include that, that type of public.
And how many units did you say this was?
It's a, it's 48.
Forty-eight, okay.
Yes, sir. You're going to make my presentation more than 12 minutes.
That's all right. We'll have, we'll have more questions anyways, I'm sure.
On that building?
I don't know exactly. It's about 200 per unit times...
Excuse me.
So...
I have one more question. So it was very helpful for you to share the things that you learned, because I think with any, with anything we all do, there's things that we'll learn from these. And so I think you mentioned two, and I just want to make sure, because I think it's, it's important for us to understand, things that you've learned from this particular property that you're applying to this, to our, to the property that you're proposing here. So I think you said, obviously, the security cameras, the bathroom. What are, are there other things you want to share with us that you've kind of learned from this particular project that, you know, that you've, that you've applied to this application in front of us?
Right. As, as one of the original buildings that we took over, I was essentially doing the property management along with our property manager, and so what we've done is, again, pushed me out of that selection process and bringing on a professional management staff who, that's their career, that's their life, that's what we do. So we were a very small organization when we were able to successfully get this project put together. We only had two or three staff at the time. Have grown, we have 12 staff now. Most of them are doing property management, so being able to, as a small, struggling nonprofit organization, we did the best that we could, and have really learned and grown and added those lessons as we continue to do more and more buildings. We've done more than other, almost dozen buildings since then.
Do you have an onsite property manager at Claridge?
There is not an onsite property manager. There's not space for it.
Mm-hmm.
The building is pretty full. There's not any room for an onsite manager. We've had, in the past, janitors who have lived there, sort of off and on. Sometimes it works to have a janitor live there. Sometimes it creates other problems having somebody there, but there isn't anyone currently full-time onsite.
Okay. So how does it work? Does the manager have hours that they come by? How, how do things work?
Right. So they work with, so the, the property manager herself is there at the building on a regular basis, meeting with tenants. Because we do annual recertifications with all the leases, every lease is renewed on annual basis, so there's 48 units. It's about four leases a month, so the property manager is there, weekly, working with tenants, dealing with tenants on the, on the leases, on the updates, on their income recertifications. And then the maintenance folks that we have are there at least three days a week, cleaning, doing maintenance, you know, just keeping the building up.
Okay, thanks.
I would suggest that we move on to the next slide.
That's the exciting one, though. That's what everyone wants to talk about. The other question came up, a little more detail on the tenant selection process. This is less exciting than the, the building and the excitement of the folks that are living there, but the selection process is across the board, all of our buildings. So in essence, each building gets its own waiting list of tenants that are interested in living there, so we start from scratch. We market the availability of units locally. When the building is done or getting near, near to completion, we announce when that list is going to open up, and then we create a list and add people that are interested. It's essentially on a first-come, first-served basis, so knowing that it's available, knowing that it's out there, and opening is an important part of the process. So any building that we do in that local town, we start marketing it locally and sort of work our way out concentrically. So we're in the middle of Willmet, we'll market it in Willmet, the local paper, local organizations, local contacts, and sort of expand concentrically from there. And we do that in each building. When we opened a building in Glenview a year ago, we did the same thing, marketed locally, and then sort of expand concentrically. We're going to open a building this summer up in Arlington Heights. We'll do the same thing, sort of open it up that way.
Yeah, thank you. How successful were those efforts to start local and make that opportunity available for local residents?
Every community is a little bit different. The property that we, that I have really good statistics on, we did a property in Highland Park. It was a building downtown Highland Park on Central Avenue, near the post office. Familiar with that location? 80% of the people who moved in there were living in Highland Park at the time. In Glenview, I think the number is closer to 50%. Every building's a little bit different, sort of varies building by building, but we really make an effort to make sure we have local contacts. That's really important, part of what we do.
Was it the advertising that worked in the case of Highland Park?
Part of its advertising, part of its target population, where folks are coming from, the, the set-asides that we have.
Thank you.
There is an income certification process. The thing that makes it that affordable housing thing, that adds that moniker, is because there is an income requirement. There's a certain maximum income above which people cannot earn. And so the, sort of the first cut is, are due income qualify? Do you make not too much money to be able to, to move in? We do verify all that income. It's based on gross household income, so everybody who's going to live in the unit, all of their income is added up. We verify employment, we verify all their bank accounts, we verify all that information with third parties. We conduct background checks, which include not only a criminal background check, but also a credit check. We recognize that people don't have perfect credit, and so we take a lot of time reviewing what the credit issues are, depending on if it's medical issues, or it's charge card issues, or what the issue makes a difference. On criminal background checks, we do do a state and national background check, so we get data off, if there is any criminal history, and have a whole slide later on that can go into more detail on, we are able and do not prohibit folks who have a felony conviction, folks that are on the sex offender list. We do exclude people for those reasons, so the criminal background check is an important part of that process.
Can you, for tenants, for multiple tenants in a building, or in, in one unit, can you, who do you do the background check on?
All the adults.
Anybody?
Anybody over 18 who are legally able to run the check on. Anybody who's going to live there has to be running the check.
Okay. How do you, does everybody living there have to be on the lease?
Correct.
Okay, so if it's like a mother and her 18-year-old son, that 18-year-old would have to...
Right. Run the credit check, all that would be included.
Okay.
You jumped ahead of the slide. Everybody who's going to live there has to be on the lease. If you have an infant, you've got to change the lease and add your child. If someone moves out, goes off to school, you change the lease. So it's a, it's a part of that process, to make sure that we know who's living there. Part of, we do analysis, determine based on their history, are they going to be, try to predict if they're going to be good residents in the future. But also, there's the affordability component. We want to make sure that they're not paying too much of their income towards their rent. So there's that balancing point of, you can't earn above so much, but you also can't earn below so much. So whatever the fixed amount of rent is, because again, it's not Section 8 typically, that if you have a certain amount of income, we want to make sure that you don't have to put all of your income into your housing costs. It's a bad risk. If you have other things that come up, if you want to pay for clothes, or food, or school, you spend your money on that, too. So we want to, we sort of balance what that looks like, so that the reason we're able to charge those lower rents, based on the financing, but we do try to balance that to make sure people can afford it. All leases are for a full year. There, it's, it's permanent housing, and we want and expect people to continue to renew that are good residents, to come back and stay with us long-term. It's not short-term housing, it's not emergency housing, it's permanent, long-term housing.
Has that been your experience? Because it would seem that, you know, if, if you managed to get into a building like this one, you would be very interested in staying in it for a long time. So has that been your experience in places like Glenview and Highland Park and other, other areas?
It has been, yes. Our, our buildings are always full. When there's, when there's, someone moves out, the turnover, essentially, we've got a long waiting list, depending on the building. It may be anywhere from 50 to 100 to 200 people long on each property. The turnover, just as amount of time it takes to sort of repair and fix and paint and turn the unit over. But yeah, people stay and tend to stay with us for a long time, which is, I, I often say that we could refill every building every month if we have that sort of stock available. There's a high demand, but people do tend to stay with us for a very long time. We have tenants who have been with the organization longer than I have. So when I, I came in 1997, we have some tenants who literally have been there since before I started, have lived their entire lives, their children are up and raised and off to college, and, and they're still, still living there. Some, some move on, some to have other opportunities, but in general, a large percentage of our people continue to live there for a very long time.
Does each building have its own waiting list, or is there a chance that you're going to say the waiting list of the folks on Highland Park, we've got this building in Willmet opening?
Each person, each building essentially has its own waiting list. When someone contacts us, we ask them, "Where do you want to be? What type of unit are you looking for?" And we say, "We have these available for you. Are you interested in this building and this community?" So it's each, each one individually. When we do open a new building, we start a brand-new waiting list. We don't just sort of shove everyone in. Every building has a new list, but people who are on other lists can call and say, "I'd also like to be on, on that list."
If they're on the waiting list, do they get preferential treatment before you advertise, or...
For any new building, we're starting a brand-new list from scratch.
Okay.
So it's, it's, if they're on other ones, it doesn't matter, they're on that one, on a new list, on a new order. And they may, if they're looking for a, they can be on the list depending on a one, on a one-bedroom in Skokie Building, and a one-bedroom in an Evanston Building, and a one-unit, they may be at the top of the list, and the other unit, other building, they're at the bottom, because there's a lot more people on that list, there's more demand for that. So it's, it's complicated. I'm glad I'm not doing that part anymore. It's a big spreadsheet, essentially, yeah.
When you have more applicants, let's say, if this one is approved, how do you select the first 16 units?
The, the process is essentially based on first-come, first-served. It's the date that the application comes in. So we start with application number one and go through the entire process, probably several at a time, but that's essentially the process until we find 16 that qualify. So going through the list, pull the first one off based on timestamping, date stamping, when that application arrives. Going through the list, do the income qualify? Do they pass all the checks? Do we think that they're going to be successful? And we, until we get the first 16 that come up, and then there's a waiting list from that point on that just sort of adds to the bottom. That answer?
Because, so the, the success analysis, is that subjective, or are there like objective criteria that you cannot reject somebody?
So there are both. I mean, there, there are both. So there are certain thresholds. I talked about the criminal background check. So the first check is income. If they're over income, they're out. If they have a criminal history, they're out. The, based on the subjective part is, they have, their credit score is 400 or 450, or they have, they've had medical bills on their credit report, or they just opened up five cell phones and haven't paid any of them off, right? So there's, that's subjective. Subjective things, based on the income level, can they afford that? We try to target that at no more than 35. It's typically 30% of people's income, sort of 30, 35%. If it's much beyond that, again, it's subjective. What else do they, what else do they have? Do they have kids? Are they older? What are their, what are their other expenses? That's part of, there's both subjective and objective.
And so you're permitted to make those, those decisions?
Correct.
Okay.
That's, that's the, that's the, that's the art of property management.
Just, just as any other landlord would.
Correct.
Maybe with some additional limitations, but landlords do that all the time.
We're a little more regulated, but...
Right.
All landlords do that. We sort of have fixed regulations. I, I build that into automatically. I think we already have those regulations that other landlords don't experience. Anybody goes through that process selecting any resident, "Are they going to be a good risk for my building?"
Well, I was going to piggyback a little bit on that, because it was going to make my questions of more the public benefit. And I know with the member care facility, we structured something that said, you know, if you were a Willmet resident, they might get a preferential treatment. Is there a way that you could structure that list, that if Willmet resident, Willmet employee within Willmet, that you get first right, or you get, you get a faster jump on the list, or a little bit of a head start on the list?
It's a good question. If, if federal laws allow that, we'll go back to that. Years ago, it used to be perfectly legal, perfectly allowed, that if you were in a community, you would jump everybody who wasn't. Federal laws have changed to not permit that anymore, that if everybody in the community likes oranges, somebody from outside the community can never get to that list, because if people with oranges move to the top, they're always going to be on the top. If those laws change, we're happy to do that. Every community asks that same question, and we'd love to just say yes.
You tell everybody, like me, it's illegal.
Of being illegal, thanks.
You said that as politely as possible.
Right, yeah, I was going to say, it was much more polite than "it's illegal." That's what I was about to say. I had to ask. So is there a separate waiting list for veterans, or is that held distinct, or how does that portion of this work?
So there are subcategories within the list. He's taking your question to the extreme, so I'll sort of explain that briefly. There are subcategories, which you're four slides ahead, that we do set asides for. So we have, we will promise that we are going to set aside some of the units for some of those subcategories. So we've agreed to have 20% of the units for veterans. So whenever a unit comes up and is available, if a veteran household moves out, and we need to have four veterans households, we need to find a veteran household to move back in there. If somebody, if we have a unit that's set aside for somebody with a disability, there's only three people with disabilities, there's a fourth unit that becomes vacant, the next one, the next available unit has to meet, start to work towards those set-asides. Subcategories of subset-asides. So we, we have a list of requirements, and that's the additional spreadsheet of, how do you get everyone to fit into those slots?
Okay.
Is that, is that clear?
Yes.
So we always have to, because of the funding, we have people looking at our shoulder, the, the way that the agencies look at us, we have to stay in compliance. So it means the next available unit, if somebody's status changes, we have to get the next available unit in, back into compliance with all those promises.
And that unit is held open until that?
Essentially, yes. That has to be filled. We have to get back towards that compliance. Somebody's income goes up, the next person who comes in has to go push us back into that compliance level.
So at any one moment, it may not be totally numerically on, on target, but you are working towards that, that number?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
So President Valinsky, is it okay that we keep asking these questions?
Yeah, I'm no longer going to hold him to his promise of 12 minutes. No, I mean, I, it-
I wanted to make sure.
What I want, I want this, this process with you to be asking the questions that are frankly, on the minds of everybody in the room. You know, I, I think we want to, we want to get everything out there on the table and be very transparent with the process here, so.
Okay. So could you clarify for me, what are the set-asides in this particular property? You know, between veterans? Are you going to come to that later? Okay, that's fine. Then the second thing was building on what Trustee Sullivan said, which is just, we recognize what you can't do in terms of Wilmeth residents and things like that. But I just want to understand and clarify, because I know this question has come up for many residents. So you have waiting lists for all these different properties, you know, within Evanston, with, which is a good thing. I mean, not a good thing, but at least shows the properties you're doing and things like that are well managed. So my question is, do you anticipate that people on your waiting, you know, some people that are on your waiting list for Evanston, and waiting list for Highland Park, or waiting list for Skokie, do you anticipate that they're going to move to this waiting list as well? Because it kind of was building on what Trustee Sullivan had said around marketing locally. And I just, I'm trying to understand just how that process would work.
Not necessarily. If, if they are currently Wilmeth residents, and there isn't an option for them, they're probably on another town's list. If- Folks who are, or folks that are on the Evanston list, want to be in Evanston, so they want to be on, in that town's list. The way that we market is by, is through local contacts. That's who's going to know that units are available. And by doing that sort of local contact, spreading the word locally, everybody in town is going to know that this is coming up, and you're going to let all your friends and neighbors know, we want to get our folks in, on that list. If folks from other town, on other lists are from town, they'll be, of course, excited to get on the list, but depends on where your friends are and your support structure is. You don't move to that unit just because it's newer in that town, because that's where your people are.
Okay, so it looks like you were on, I'm going to put you back on your slide. You were on lease, you were on the lease, the lease box there.
And everyone's on the lease. And we recertify everybody annually. So you'll loop back, not all the way around, but you loop back around through income certification, every year, at lease renewal.
So before you, before you, it looks like you're about to jump. It said drug-free is on your slide, so.
Yes. So there's a, there's an entire addendum. It's a piece of paper attached to the back of the lease. It's called the Drug-Free Addendum, and they have to sign and say, we understand that we can be evicted for drug use. It's just one of those things that we call out. It's an explicit thing. Stepping back a little bit from this is, is, I've told you what the process is, but how do I prove that's what the process is? There's a document that was created by, I put Ida up there. Ida is the Illinois Housing Development Authority. It's our funding source. It's a state agency. And it provides a document called the TSP. There's an acronym, so you know it's a good document. Under the Tenant Selection Plan, it lays out all the rules, and every organization has to follow the rules of how you do selection. And it says things like, everyone has to be on the lease. This is a document that we sign. It's included in all our stack of legal documents. It says the rejection criteria. It allows the Drug-Free Housing Addendum. It says that people need to be able to live independently. You need to be able to be a good resident. You need to be able to live independently. If that means you get access to supportive services, that's great. You can live independent with the access that you get to the services. We work with residents who experience change. I've heard criticism on the side that we don't evict people if there are problems. Well, we do evict people if there are problems, but I've also heard criticisms that will evict somebody who gets overcrowded. They have a child, and that pushes them over the limit. Our goal is to keep people in housing. Our goal is to keep them housed. And so we don't just turn around and say on a whim, you have, you have two people in a one-bedroom, and now you had a child, bye-bye, you need to get out tomorrow. We work with you to find other housing options. We work with you to find other units available, maybe in the building, maybe in other buildings. So our goal, as a mission-driven, again, mission-driven nonprofit, our goal is to keep people housed. So we try to get rid of folks that are problems, but try to help people that are good residents. And all of that's permitted under the selection plan. The exciting part of the plan, of course, is everyone wants to know, how can we reject people? How can we try to not pick people who are going to be a problem? And it's specifically, again, in the, in the document, I cut and paste a little paragraph, depending on how deep you want to dig into this. What allows us to reject people? If they provide false information, we can reject them. If they have a poor credit history, we can reject them. If we can't verify their credit, we can reject them. If they can't prove that they can pay, we can reject them. Again, all in this legal document. If they have criminal convictions, we are currently legally allowed to evic, not, not retain them as tenants, not, not accept them as tenants. This document permits that, and this lists all the possibilities. So if they're evic, if they've been previously evicted for a drug-related activity, if they're a registered sex offender, if we believe that they will interfere with the health, safety, peaceful enjoyment of others, we can make that subjective judgment call, will they be good residents? Physical, criminal convictions regarding violence, criminal convictions for controlled substance. So all of those things are in that document that say that we can't accept people that meet those requirements. And the fourth item would be people that are household characteristics that are not appropriate for the unit. There's some discussion of how many people can we shove into a building? If it's too many people, if it's a five- or six-person household, in a two-bedroom unit, that's not appropriate for the unit. Tenant Selection Plan allows us, permits us, under a legal document, to not accept people who wouldn't be good residents in the building.
How many, how many people did you reject last year? Of the, all the applications you received, how many did you reject, and how many did you evict?
That's an excellent question. I don't know.
Digging myself out of a hole. I just asked how many they rejected. There's plenty of seats up front, too.
I don't know. If it's a fact, you want me to go bug my staff, I can find out.
Okay.
So who will be future residents? Again, we're targeting Wilmeth residents. We can't restrict to, but we are very clearly, explicitly letting you know, we are targeting Wilmeth residents as much as we possibly can. It'll include families. It'll include seniors. It'll include individuals. It'll include roommates. Somebody, somebody asked me, if, if two individuals apply, will we match them up? We don't do matching services. That's not what we do. If two friends want to apply, and they want to live together, that's on them, but they have to income qualify as a household, and they have to be on the lease, and they have to do that. We're not doing that job for them. The, again, the income threshold, the thing that makes this affordable is that it's 60% of area median income, AMI, if I start throwing that term out, a good acronym. Those are the numbers. If you want to know, based on the number of people in the household, 60% of area median income for a person, one person is $35,000, two people's $40,000, three people's $45,000, four people's $50,000. They have to earn less than that to qualify. That's the basic threshold. We are having a set-aside of 20% of units for very low income. That's the, the bottom row of numbers there. So four of the units will be for people that are below 17, below 20, 22, or 25. 20% of the units will be set aside for veterans. When we bought the building from the American Legion, they thought that was a pretty good idea, so we've continued to, to hold ourselves to that promise. And then also, not mutually exclusive, 20% of the units will be for people with disabilities. And that can be any type of disability, disability neutral. It's not, it could be physical, mental, developmental, it doesn't, it could be any of those things. But always will be in compliance with, some of those people will meet those requirements.
And, and with that one, how does that square with living independently, which was one of your other criteria? How, how do you manage that process?
So that's, part of that is, some folks have access to services. The ability to have, well, if someone needs a level of supportive services. Everyone has friends or family that they rely on to, you know, when you first move to apartment, you're young, you have family to be able to help you. If you have a physical disability and you need help getting around, you need to have a service that can provide that. If you have a mental disability, you may have an agency that you work with that can help you. You may have someone, if you have a type of disability, that needs someone to come by on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, on hourly basis. You need to have access to that. We, as an organization, are the owner and landlord. We provide the unit, we provide the rent. We understand that folks may need additional levels of services, and may need to link up with those services. We're not providing them. You need to be independent with the services that you need to get along with your daily life.
And so that's, but that's, but as you said earlier, that's part of your, in essence, tenant underwriting criteria, if you were. If, if someone had an issue, but they hadn't figured out how to live independently, that's not the role that you take. And frankly, that's, that, if I understood what you said earlier, you would say, sorry, this isn't the place for you to live, until you get this stuff figured out.
Correct. Every, every unit is not for everyone. And while it would be great if that were true, and we had tons of units available for everyone that has the, that income qualifies, if they don't have the ability to live independently, then that's, that can be a criteria that they would be rejected based on.
Can you explain the very low income? Are they still paying the same rent that you, the 600, I think, was it 615 for the one-bedroom and 800 for the two-bedroom?
Correct. Correct. The rental amounts are fixed, so it's not a sliding scale. Sometimes people have rental assistance available, and sometimes, and if their income is extremely low, they would have assistance that would help them be able to pay that portion of the rent.
Okay. Are you still using the criteria, you talked about the 30%, maybe 35% of their income? How does that work? Or are you then counting the, a voucher too, or something to supplement that?
If, because the voucher by definition allows you to pay 30%, sort of automatically fit that, and then the gap, the gap can be made up.
Okay. Is there, is there a, so that 17, is that the minimum, that a very low income?
That's the maximum.
That's the max.
Trustee Plunkett, would you lean into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Right. So, so that's the, those are the maximums. That's the, that's the, we have this chart that lays that out. That's, and those numbers change every year. So we, we look at that chart, and that's sort of, that's sort of that, that first on the, on the tenant selection process, that's the income thresholds that we're dealing with.
I'm sorry. I, I'm not sure. Can you explain those, that chart again? Can you explain what the two numbers mean for one person, two person, three person, four person?
So this is the income qualifying. This is sort of-
The top and the bottom?
So the, is there a pointer? The 60% figure is the top line?
The 60%. So their income, if it's a one-person, if there's, for a one person living there, so they must make-
Less than 35.
Less than 35. Okay, so if you, okay, and then what's the bottom number?
So there are-
Not the bottom number. I'm sorry, you know, the second number.
The bottom number. So that, that 20% very low income, that statement, sort of across from that chart, 20%, so there will be 20% of four of the units-
Or three, whatever, right.
Would be for people that meet that bottom number. They can't earn more than the bottom row. Depending, it's-
Three, actually, I think.
So if you, if you, depending on how many people are in the household, so pick, pick a number yourself to sort of, to understand the chart. If you want to choose the two people per household, let's just work with that number.
Yes.
All, everybody has to be below 40,000. Okay?
Everybody-
Everybody in the entire, all 16 units, all 16 families. Let's, let's work in the two-person, the two-person column?
Yep.
Everybody has to be below that 40, no matter what. There can't be anybody who makes $40,621.
And that would be household income, correct?
Household, gross household income, everybody living there, all, all contributions. In addition-
So, sir, let's, let's, let's keep, I'm sorry, you'll have your, you'll have your chance later.
He's one of my helpers.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
He's trying to help me get through this.
I'm just trying to keep the meeting organized.
Now, in it, so here's a second threshold, again, this big spreadsheet that we have to fit everybody into. Four of the units, 20%, four of the units have to meet that bottom row. Everybody has to be below the top row, but there's a subset. Trustee Kurt's been asked about subsets, about veterans or people with disabilities. There's a subset of folks who have to be below that bottom row income level. So if you're a sing, if, if a single, there has to be a single person, or a couple, or a three-person household, some combination of four households that can't be above that bottom row number.
First of all, why is your number four instead of three? Because 20%, I think that's one of the questions you were-
Six, 16 times.
16, I know, 20% is 3.2.
Right. So do you have to round up, or you round down, or?
No. So, so, okay, just, that was just my own calculation. Sorry, just, I did it again just to make sure. Okay, so, so in this unit that we're going to, you know, in this unit you're proposing, that it will have 16 units, four of them will be for very low income. Four of them will be for veterans, and four of them will be for persons with a disability. Is that true?
Not mutually exclusive.
Not mutually exclusive.
We count every time.
Got it.
So you could have-
So, okay, that's-
A very low-income veteran with a disability.
Mark all the, mark those boxes.
And that's, that counts for three of those slots in one person.
Got it. Okay, okay. And then, so, and then going back to, let's just focus on two people. Sorry. You, they all, the, the house, the family income, so if there's two people that are living there, that are both adults, the sum of their income can't be more than $40,620. That's what you're saying. And if they are, if one of the person qualifies in that building for very low income, then that whole unit is considered that, and the total is 2310?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, no, hang on. I think, I think you actually got that wrong.
Okay.
The two people that are living together in, and to be considered very low income, both of them combined have to be 2310. Is that correct? Or is it just one person?
This is confusing.
So it's, so each, so 16 units, we'll count all 16 units individually. That, four, four of them are calculated a little bit differently. So the 16, nobody can make above the 40,000. Plus, there's a subset. There's a subcategory, just like there's a subcategory of people with disability, just like there's a subcategory of people that are veterans. There's a subcategory that has to make less than that bottom row.
But it's, but it's household income?
Gross household.
Gross household income for everybody on the lease over the age of 18.
Correct.
So for the two-person, it's two people that can't make more than 20,310. It's not each person 20,310.
Correct.
Right, okay.
So a household making $10 an hour would, would pretty much qualify for that unit. Somebody who's working, making that an hour as a, as a, as a household.
Got it.
But let me ask one more question, just because I-
One more.
I said that a lot of times. Okay, I'll hold my question. I'll hold my question.
So in the last bullet here, I think that's the last one. You haven't hit on this one. I just want to make sure you get them all in, and I, because this is a question that people ask.
Right. Question raises, how many people will live in the building? I can send this to you. The maximum that's allowed, we used to deal with families, and how's a family defined, how many unrelated individuals, and that's not the rule anymore. The rule is no more than two people per bedroom. So if you want to count the maximum number of people, and some say that we could shove in there, if you're counting two people per bedroom, it would be two people in a one-bedroom, and up to four people in a two-bedroom. That would be the maximum number. The reality, our experience, what we actually deal with on a daily basis, is that in a one-bedroom unit, there's typically around 1.25 people per unit. And on average, in all of our buildings, it's about two and a half people for a two-bedroom unit. So we would expect that trend to continue, and based on one and a quarter people for a one-bedroom, and two and a half people for a two-bedroom, would be about 28 people. To sort of give some level of perspective, people have been throwing out that number of 44. That's the maximum number, but that's not the required number. It's not the number that we believe. It'll be around that many people. Whether 28's better or worse, that's, that's closer to what the reality will probably be. Ready for more exciting topics? Questions about parking come up. So there is one parking space per unit. The parking space will be assigned. Every, each, each person who has a car, each household that has a car, will get assigned a unit. That leaves four, at least four spaces for visitors. When the parking spaces are signed, if you don't have a car, you don't get a space. We register their cars. Tow vehicles that are not registered, or that could have other violations. So everybody will get a parking space, and there's additional space available. Our experience, and if you've seen the traffic study, or the parking study, rather, we don't expect everyone to have a vehicle. The experience, there are other buildings, is that not everyone does have a vehicle. Large majority are. It's sort of hard to imagine living in the suburbs and not having a vehicle, but people do access public transportation, the bus line that runs right along Wilmeth Avenue, with the station being a mile away. There are public transportation options. There will be a bicycle rack, for those who need to use the bicycle. But there is at least one space available for everyone. Some issues raised with safety and cameras. We sort of talked about that a little bit with the other buildings, adding cameras to the buildings. We are counting, we anticipate, so this is a picture of what cameras look like. There will be cameras in the common areas, on the exterior, a couple of cameras in the parking area, camera on the front, camera in the common areas, in the hallways, in the stairwells, in the community room. I would imagine around 12 cameras in the building would sort of cover all those common areas, and we have access to all that information through a computer. And then, a question was raised about lighting in the parking areas. The spirograph on the right, that spirograph is showing where lights are going to be in the parking lot. So all those circles that intersect with each other, that's where all the lights will be to illuminate the parking area. Any spirograph questions? How will we do upkeep, upkeep and make sure the building stays looking good and high-quality construction? First of all, this building is brand-new, so it's a little bit different than rehab buildings. It's being built from scratch. So we hire a construction company that's well-respected in the area. We work with some of the big contractors in Chicagoland Market to build the buildings, and build them of high quality. Just because it's affordable, just because the low, rent is low, doesn't mean we build them of low quality. We recognize that we want to reduce our long-term maintenance costs, so we spend money upfront. Rehab, when we do the construction, building a quality building. Initially, when the building's done, if things break, things go wrong. We can work on the contractor with warranty issues, and them coming back to do repairs. But in the long-term, there are going to be things that get bad, go, get old, and break down. So to jumpstart us, we capitalize a replacement reserve. From the day we close, part of the financing package is that $800 per unit, or $12,800 is set aside in a reserve held by Ida, that state agency, that's used for future replacement. The roof goes bad, things go wrong, things that break down. Additionally, annually, we set aside more into that reserve. So that's $400 per unit, every single year, another $6,400 set aside for future capital issues, things that go wrong. In addition, In addition, on an operating annual basis, we set aside about $13,000 for repairs, for cleaning, for turnover, for supplies, for all those types of repairs, so there's money budgeted for ongoing small repairs, there's money budgeted, set aside, saved for longer-term repairs. Not all the buildings in the past had that ability, so buildings that were done previously may not have had those reserves that were set aside. That's currently part of the way the funding structure is put together, we're encouraged and required to put aside that money, as well as budgeting for money, so there's money enough to take care of repairs now, tomorrow, and in the future.
And the pro forma that was in the materials seemed to show a pretty, you know, healthy margin there, that it didn't look like this was, that your debt service and your operating costs were going to stretch this, stretch this building.
Part of that is the funding mechanism that we go through, part of that is the state agency being fiscal responsible stewards, and, and showing that there's enough money to operate things, but not too much money, so that it's wasteful, and that's sort of a fine line that they walk.
And your, and your suggestion was that, that these standards may have changed over the past 20 years?
We have more, yeah, they're, they require more set-asides, they, all of a sudden, someone recognized that things go wrong and eventually wear out, and if you don't have money when it wears out, there's not going to be money there. So that, those reserves are much more plentifully funded than they used to be in previous years, and the margins are, are loose, so we can pay for those things.
Yeah, and, and my recollection is there's another building, I'm looking at Mr. Stradler, there's another building, Gates Manor, is, is at like the end of its life cycle, and we, we, they applied for tax credits or something to get additional money to do rehabilitation work, does that make sense?
After 15, 20 years, there may be large, major repairs done. If you haven't, some buildings need an enormous amount of repairs later on. If you resyndicate those tax credits, you can get a larger amount of money to do an influx to really do the building and set it up for another 40 years. Sometimes it's enough to keep it along, the, our favorite building we talked about earlier over in Evanston, the 319 Dempster Building, we have not resyndicated that because there are, we've been doing repairs and setting aside money, and so there is money available, so we haven't needed to restructure like Gates has been trying to do. Sometimes it happens, it's sometime, it's not a good or bad thing, it's just some buildings need that. A question was raised about property values and the impact on property values surrounding the building, people who own their homes in the area. We talked about it a little bit, the plan commission meeting, as you may have guessed, this issue has come up before around the country. National studies have been done, research studies have been done, there are hundreds of reports, I initially put them on a slide and decided not to bore you with them. We submitted a few of them in our packet, so that you can see that there are national studies. And what's interesting about them is that they show that there's no substantial diminishment of property values surrounding the existing, when, when affordable housing comes to an area. These studies, they, they've been done all over the country, different types of projects, different kinds of properties, different kinds of communities, suburban, rural, urban areas, all the studies tend to show the same thing. The study that we submitted with our proposal showed that there were, based on locally, so just studying in, in this suburban area, property in Highland Park, the one here in Wilmette, and two of HODC's properties, one in Evanston, one in Skokie, looking at property values of surrounding properties have, are, is there an impact? Looking at a house-by-house basis, are property amount, values diminished? And the chart on the left is exactly the same as the chart on the right, one is numbers, one is just the, the bars, so whichever one you prefer, they have, they say the exact same thing. This shows the range of impact. So some properties were worth a little bit less, some properties were worth a little bit more, in all four of the project, in all four of those sites, and in fact, if you look at the study, all 10 different sites that were reviewed, all of them have a range. Essentially, if you average all that out, it's almost zero. Essentially, there's no impact, so some, there are other characteristics, there, there's something else that's causing the property values to either be higher or lower than other property values based on proximity to an affordable housing project. When it was suggested at the meeting that the diminishment may be up 5%, here's where that came to it from, is that it's not that your properties are going to diminish 5%, it's that, that could, that would be the, it's experienced in some of the markets, that some of the properties do go down, and that's the, potentially the amount that they have gone down in the area. They also could go up, properties that are near an affordable housing project in the area, those properties have actually increased in value. So on average, it stays about the same, on average, there really is no substantial diminishment, there's no substantial impact. That's shown locally and on a larger scale. As Mr. Adler discussed, our timeline, we have been in this process for quite a while, it's taken us a long time, we've been listening to community input. We came forward with a project that we thought would be successful and have gotten a lot of community feedback, we have listened to a lot of discussions and tried to modify and change the proposal to make it better to serve the community, and by getting that input, so we've made some revisions, including reducing the number of units, changing the mix of units to include family units, adding a larger space so that we have more space available in the building for, for the community room and office space. The parking ratio is better than when we first came in. We came in, actually, the village engineer had suggested way, way early on doing the buy-out, so we had included that originally, and we have successfully figured out how to actually reduce the stormwater retention and eliminate that stormwater runoff by 94%, which does comply with code, but it is actually pretty exciting what that actually looks like on a real basis, on a real project, that reduces 94% of the stormwater runoff on a major storm from what stands there currently today. We continue to not request any village funding. We aren't going to need funding now and don't need funding in the future, we're setting aside those reserves to, to fund the building. We have other outside sources, most of them are government sources. The property does pay real estate taxes, it's based on the assessed value of the property based on the restricted rents. It happens to be probably the most, one of the most regulated buildings in the area, you think we're just off on our own, out and running. We get, we are extremely regulated. In order to get the funding that we put the package together to make this happen, we have someone looking over our shoulder constantly, whether it's the state agency, whether it's the investor, whether it's the lenders, all, they're all looking over our shoulder to make sure we're doing a good job. We also came in with a green certification. It's called Enterprise Green Communities, that's their graphic on the lower right-hand corner. It's sort of, it's, it's similar to a LEED standard, but it is the standard used in the affordable housing industry, and it includes things like universal design characteristics, Energy Star appliances, includes lots of high levels of insulation, interesting things like having a no-smoking plan, having a building that has an envelope that is extremely tight. So we had originally come in and still promised that we will meet those Enterprise Green Community standards and do with all of our existing buildings currently. In conclusion, thank you for all your questions, I think that based on the comprehensive plan, the affordable housing plan, this, this property meets those requirements, hopefully will make us a long-term asset. We want to continue to do properties like this in all communities throughout the northern suburbs, addresses the housing need, we have, the market study shows that need, but we've all, also been getting calls of people wanting to know when they can move in. Said not yet. But a picture of our friend Jean Cleland in the lower right-hand corner, who was on our board when I joined, is one of our founding members, and fulfills hopefully a vision that she had for us.
Thank you. Are there further questions right now? Mr. Koenig's not going anywhere, he's sitting right there.
I have more slides too, if you want.
One more, I'm just kidding.
Trustee Kurtzman.
To the parking slide, I noticed that there was one spot for a person with a disability, and yet there's the potential for four occupants or resident units that could have a disability, so I'm wondering how you would navigate that should there be that circumstance?
So where with the physical, someone with a physical disability, if we have multiple residents with a physical disability, it will be hard to have them all have handicap parking spaces. We have to look and see if we can move the accessible space to the middle of those two spaces, if we need to eliminate one of the, one of the parking spaces so that we have that space available, we would accommodate that.
Has that been a problem at other locations, or am I overthinking this?
Every building is a little bit different, some buildings have people that need that, whether it's wheelchair access and that ability, it hasn't been a problem in the past. If we have five or six people that apply with wheelchairs, it's going to be an issue. And it would be sort of in any new property like this, making sure there's enough space available for the vehicle.
Fair enough, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Koenig, if you would have a seat, I'd like to call a couple of the department heads up, just to talk about some specific things, and Mr. Adler, you're, you're first on the list if you would approach. So one of the, one of the questions that's been raised has been around the density of this project. There have been many suggestions raised, but I think the, the relevant question is, you know, what, what is the, what is the zoning code, what are, what are the villages' ordinances permit here, how much density is permitted, and, and what, what uses are permitted, and the like?
Sure. This property is zone NR, so neighborhood retail. In the neighborhood retail district, when it comes to residential, there isn't a density limitation, in the other districts, the R3 district, the R4 district, there is a density limitation, but in the NR district, there isn't a density when I'm talking, when I'm talking, sorry, when I'm talking density, I should say residential unit density. The NR district does have a one, a floor area ratio of 1.0, and what that means is basically what the lot area is, you could build that much structure. And in the case of the NR district, it allows up to two and a half stories at the floor area ratio of 1.0. This is a three-story building, and if you were thinking about if this three-story building was going to be meeting the floor area ratio, each floor would have to have approximately 33% of the lot area in it to equal that 100%. The permitted uses in this district include office, it includes personal service uses, which would be things like a salon, or an, or a, a dry cleaners. What we call art studios, which would be things like Pilates studios, yoga studios, would also be things that would be permitted in this district. For commercial use, the provision of parking under the building, non-enclosed, and at-grade is permitted. In the NR district is, is where we require the parking to be low-grade, and that was initially done to sort of protect the natural development along Ridge Road and Fortin Linden, which are NR districts, where you have the buildings up to the front in the retail, and we had seen at least one occasion where somebody built a building with the parking underneath, and not very much commercial on the first floor. There's a, and I'll, I'll pull it up, there was a document that was submitted during the artist's discussion, which was the planning and development at 333 Ridge, which I think arguably proved helpful when looking at the-
Can you make that the whole?
Yeah.
The screen? Here comes John Praesner to the rescue.
Yeah.
Oh, full screen mode, there you go. That one, there we go.
So this was, this was discussed during artist, and that's why you'll see the artist's name there, but this shows the, the heights of the buildings and approximate FARs. Now, these FARs were calculated looking at the permit documents that we had on file, and also looking at some of the county information, but it gives you an idea depending on, you know, the, the numbers where you were talking approximately, where you're talking the multi-story commercial buildings, you know, approximately 1.15 to approximately 1.35 on, on those floor area ratios. Those buildings, the buildings that you see A, B, C, and D are all in, on properties that are zoned that would allow 48-foot height, those are zoned R3, so that's why you see building C, which is 40 feet, building D, which is 37 feet, building A, which is 37 feet, and then building B, which is the building immediately south of this, is actually shorter, it's, it's 27 feet.
And remind me, this one is?
This is proposed at 30 feet.
30 feet, okay.
In a floor area ratio of, I believe, 1.35.
1.35 or 6, yes. Okay. So, and would you, just for the benefit, it may be small for people to read, could you read off the, the, the numbers that are up there for, for the residential buildings, for the ABC and D?
Sure. Building A, which is, which is, I believe, a condominium building on the 200 block of Ridge, the FAR is approximately 1.2 to 1.33, and it's 37 feet in height. Building B, which is three, around 315 Ridge Road, I believe it contains around 82 units, it's approximately 27 feet in height, and has a floor area ratio of 1.27. Building C, which is condominium building of four stories at the corner of Wilmette and Ridge, has a height of approximately 40 feet. And these are numbers that we got from the artist group, I think that number's probably less, I, I think from the way we measure it now, it's probably closer to 35 feet, but their, their number indicated 40. And a FAR between 1.21 and 1.35. And then the final building that we have information on, that's a multi-unit building in the area, is the 400 block of Ridge, and that's building D, where it's, where it's approximately 37 feet tall, and floor area ratio of 1.16 to 1.22.
And, and how many units, how many, how many, you know, residential units are in these buildings?
Total, there's probably about 200 in the buildings. I know the 1900 Wilmette's approximately 20, 21. The building B, again, I believe is 82, and I apologize, I don't know the exact numbers of those other buildings, but I think they were in the 30 range.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Adler?
What was the FAR that we approved, I meant, Mr. just sent us, but on the artist building?
Sure, the FAR we approved is 1.44. That, that does include, which I think most of you know, including the courtyard-
Yeah.
Because there was a, because of the nature of the building, there is a wall that's built, so you don't see into that courtyard. If you took half the courtyard, it would be down to about 1.35. If you removed the entire courtyard, it'd be down to about 1.30 on the artist property. Now, that is a building that's 38 feet in height, so that building did need variation to the 30-foot height variation, sorry, the, the 30-foot height requirement.
Okay, further questions for Mr. Adler?
Just on some of those other residential buildings, what is the required FAR for those buildings?
From, from what I could tell, was probably closer to one. What's changed is the way we look at FAR. It appears that in the past, most of these buildings, you'll see their lower level is depressed, meaning it's, it's low-grade, and typically even our ordinance today says if the, the first level's below grade, it doesn't count as a story. So my guess is these buildings, which, and you see it in the city a lot, four-plus ones, so my guess is that there was a, when they came in, the way the floor area was calculated was less than we do now today. And same with the, the, the way we look at the height of the building has changed, and the way we look at the number of stories has changed.
Okay, Mr. Adler, thank you for now. Ms. Berger, would you approach? So two, two topics for you, parking and traffic. First off, for the benefit more of the residents, I think the trustees know that, but for, for projects like this, people, applicants, if they need a traffic study, or they need a parking study, or a stormwater study, or any engineering study, the village maintains a list of approved consultants, and if the applicant uses one of those consultants, then we don't perform our own study because these are people that we trust and have worked with over the years, that's-
That's correct.
Okay, so the traffic study and the parking study then was done by one of, quote, "our consultants," or one of the consultants that we, that we work with all the time, or that's on our approved list?
I could clarify that.
Yes.
The original traffic study was performed by a company called KLOA, that is not on our list of pre-qualified traffic engineers, but in anticipation of that, the village hired Benish to do, and they are on our pre-qualified list, to perform an independent review of the KLOA study. Our independent review did not include a parking analysis, but staff has reviewed the KLOA report and the parking numbers and confirms, confirms the results of the study. the KLOA report and the parking numbers and confirms the results of the study.
So...
Sorry. We can confirm the results of the study.
Okay, so from your point of view, from the engineering department's point of view, you have no issues with either the traffic study or the parking study that was done on this project?
That's correct.
Okay, so does anybody have questions for Ms. Berger on those topics? I'm just trying to knock off every topic that I think people want to hear about. Trustee Kersman?
Yeah, thank you. So, not particular to the application, but to the location, when you're heading eastbound on Wilmud Avenue and we have two lanes merging into one, if we are adding potentially traffic in and out of the application's location and having that on top of the Pin Oak in-and-out traffic, I'm just wondering if there's any consideration to whether the current configuration on the street still is the safest and best option. Irrespective of the application tonight, I do find that merge, you know, it's not uneventful at times. So I'm just curious what your thoughts are, given that between two recent applications, we could be impacting the traffic pattern.
Sure. Trustee Kersman, based on the traffic, I guess our best evidence of a traffic problem or a safety concern is accident history. And in talking to the police chief, there is no evidence that this is a dangerous or unsafe situation. So the incremental volume that's being added as a part of this development, we do not anticipate to all of a sudden create a traffic concern or safety concern. And just to clarify, Wilmud Avenue, although it is driven as a four-lane roadway, it's actually a two-lane roadway. So that lane merge sign is very confusing. It's really a lane shift to get people into the correct lane.
I watch my rearview mirror very carefully when I approach that, but that's why I do wonder, you know, is that still, and again, it doesn't have to be in the context of the application, but just give, you know, or it could be in the context of both applications of recent times. I just wanted to make sure that that's still our best way of ensuring public safety at that location.
At this moment, it is. And I know we're skewing a little bit from the topic at hand, but our master bike plan process will likely look at some accommodations on Wilmud Avenue, and that would include IDOT. This is an IDOT facility. So we would approach them and kind of talk to them about all of that at the same time.
Okay. I have one other question, but I would defer to others if others had.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And would traffic, would garbage pickup be, is Ms. Berger raised the right person to ask on that?
I don't know. Is that okay?
I'll do my best.
Well, to the same idea of public safety, I did observe the garbage pickup this morning. And so I do wonder whether, and it happened to take place in rush hour. So I do, I thought through whether we could work with our vendor company to not do garbage pickup during rush hour, with or without my other idea of potentially enhancing safety, whether that could just simply improve safety period for the residents of that neighborhood and everyone passing through.
Is that a question for Mr. Bremen, really? You're sort of the point person a lot on...
Sure, there's two components to it. This would be a part of our commercial waste franchise agreement, which would be separate from the trucks you typically see going up and down Wilmud Avenue. So that will come at a different time, and we can make a request that that doesn't come during the peak rush hour. The overarching concern on the residential trucks, we are in discussions with Advanced Disposal right now regarding their schedule, so we can bring that up to them as a concern we have and see if they can adjust that.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And to be clear, I did not see anything imminently dangerous, but it occurred to me that we can always have the safety of our residents in mind when it comes to traffic coming from changes from recent applications.
It's actually, we've got quite a bit on our plate, as you know, right now, but I still have in the back of my mind, tasking the Transportation Commission with sort of a listening tour throughout the village, maybe with some open houses and things like that, to get people's feedback on how traffic has changed over the last 10 years or so. There's been a number of things, not the least of it being the revitalization of downtown that may have had an impact there. So we're thinking along the same lines, actually, Trustee Kersman.
Great, well, thank you for taking the questions.
Okay, Ms. Berger, thank you. Wait, Trustee Dodd?
I have a question for you. It was, it's just piggybacking on what Trustee Kersman said. So some of the comments from the residents regarding traffic in this particular area was, and I wonder if, was turning people traveling west and turning left into this particular property so that they would be blocking the lane and then creating some sort of a backup? And this is very close to, obviously, people that would be turning left into Pin Oak, just in terms of the proximity. And I'm just wondering, in our study or also to the police chief, have we, is there any experience that has created any accident concern or safety concerns or traffic issues?
The answer is no.
Okay.
And again, the incremental volume that you're adding to this particular site is very, very small.
Okay.
Incremental relative to the normal traffic volume, right. Okay. All right, so Ms. Berger, you can have a seat. So we have our chief of police and our fire chief here. I'm not going to call them up unless a trustee has a question for them, though.
Have there, I was wondering if our chief of police has had any discussions with Evanston? Oh, I'm sorry, I keep doing that. I was wondering if our chief of police, I know people, there's been some discussions about concern over some of the HODC properties at Evanston. Do we have any discussions with our chief and Evanston's chief?
Chief Murphy, have you had any discussions with the Evanston Police Department?
Yes, I have. And I've also spoken with several other neighboring community chiefs who have HODC-managed properties, all of whom said...
Speak up just a touch.
All of whom said independently that they have a positive working relationship and no issues with the management.
Yeah, I believe what Chief Murphy just said, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, is that he's spoken with the Evanston Police Department and other communities, asked them about HODC, and if I make sure I'm quoting you properly, they, all of the police departments said that they have a positive working relationship with HODC and have no issue with them with regards to their management.
That's correct.
Any other questions for Chief Murphy? I don't want to leave Chief Wasney out, but, you know, he's fine, okay. All right. So as I look at the list of topics, my list is pretty well covered at this point. Are there other topics that the trustees want to ask questions, either of the applicant or of any of the village department heads? Trustee Wolf?
Well, I don't want to leave Chief Wasney out, so I have a question for him. I'm wondering if you have spoken to fire departments of, or emergency services departments of other communities with HODC properties, see what the nature of the service calls has been?
I have not. Have not.
Other questions? Wait, Trustee Dodd?
There was some concerns raised in terms of access to the property for the emergency vehicles, and is that something that you've looked at? And can you talk to the community about that and to the rest of us?
Yeah, so we looked over the initial site plan, and due to the height and the setbacks, we have no issues with either our vehicles or gaining access to the building itself with an ambulance.
And the same would be true for a fire truck?
Same for the fire truck. So we have setback issues all the time with different buildings, but due to the height, we don't have any particular issue with this building. So it will also be fully sprinkled and alarmed, which is a good thing.
We know that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I go back to, I hate to, Mr. Adler?
Well, Mr. Adler's not done. He's, there's, I've got a couple more questions. I actually forgot, I have one more on my list.
Well, am I, you're welcome to go first.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
But, you know, on the eight criteria under the planned use, about, on the eight criteria under the planned use development, you know, a couple of them, C and D encourage creative approach to the use of the land that results in a better development or design than might otherwise be accomplished, and then D provides an efficient use of the land to facilitate a more effective arrangement of land uses, building circularization systems and utilities. Does this, is this proposal the most creative to qualify under this, in your opinion, in your role here?
Sure, I, you know, there's a bunch of criteria that sometimes isn't completely addressed in requests, and we've seen that with the requests we've had, we've seen it with the request across the street at 611 Green Bay Road and the hotel. So there's some criteria, given the size of a lot, that those aspects of the purpose of a planned unit development aren't necessarily going to be furthered. And, you know, I would say that this is a lot that's fairly challenged, and so there's fairly limited, it's fairly limited what you could do on the lot.
So it's unlikely that you're going to build retail, you know, on a lot this size in this location and...
Right, or that you're able to reduce the setback on one portion of the development and increase it and provide some form of open space or some form of amenity.
So, in that, I mean, obviously, you know, focusing on the variations to the zoning that we're looking at, namely FAR and what, and the size of the lot, as you just said, the challenge is here, is this too much for this lot? Is this...
You look at it and it's a, you know, the building itself at 30 feet is the size of what a commercial building could be. You could have a two-story office building, or you could have a two-story building on the second floor where it's a Pilates studio or yoga studio. Those are probably the most likely, given the parking requirements and the loading requirements for those types of uses. But you wouldn't necessarily, the building itself wouldn't be any smaller. It would, at two stories, the floor area with a building with the same shell would most likely be conforming because you're taking just two floors of area when you're figuring out the floor area ratio. So I, you know, it would be hard to say that the building itself is too big for the property given that a, something that would conform and that would be commercial, that, you know, might arguably, depending on when its peak hours are, have a more intense traffic circulation.
And some people have asked about, you know, what FAR variation did we give on 611? And what about the property right behind us on Greenleaf?
Sure. The Village Center has no FAR maximum. Obviously, those buildings are much larger. 611 is a 40,000 square foot lot with 75 units. It's obviously a much larger lot and a much larger building. It's six stories in the rear and five stories in the back. 611 Green Bay Road did require relief as a part of the PUD, but one of them wasn't floor area. I believe the height variation was, it ended up, when the building was reduced, I think it was, and I might have the information, but I think it was four or five feet. And then there was a variation because we did allow residential parking at grade at that property, and there were a couple of other forms of relief. We granted parking variation, but the parking variation was specifically related to the desire to have a restaurant there. The building that is going up and is nearing completion at 1221 Greenleaf was completely by right. That's a 14-unit building, I believe, on a lot that's slightly smaller than this lot. It's really close in size. They did their parking below grade. They have, I believe, 17 spaces for those 14 units, and they're all below grade for the residential. As I recall, they have six parking spaces for the commercial, and it's for 3,000 square feet. But again, that was a by-right building with no limitation on floor area except for the setbacks and the height.
Okay, so my question, my question relates to the village's affordable housing plan. Actually, I have two questions. One of the, one of the things that came up in the Plan Commission meeting was, somebody asked us why we allowed 611 Green Bay Road to opt out of putting 15%, you know, affordable units. Why did we not force, why we let them not do what the village requires?
Right. We, there is no requirement in the zoning code or the village code that requires new developments, either by-right developments or developments that have to go through the normal zoning process or the planning and development process to provide affordable housing. So in the case of 611 Green Bay Road, again, there was, there was no requirement. It being a PUD, they needed to get their benefits up to a certain level that the village board ultimately would feel that granting the relief that was being requested justified, you know, was justified by the benefits that were being provided. The requirement that we have in our housing, in our housing plan is that at least 60 days before an application could be submitted for a development that's not providing affordable housing, developers will have to come in and meet with myself, get the plan, and understand that it is our goal to see 15% of new development have affordable housing units, and that is the, that is the only requirement.
So it's a goal and not a requirement?
Correct.
It's also not a limitation?
No, no, it's not a limitation, and correct.
So I think some people have misinterpreted the affordable housing plan as saying that this building is non-compliant with that plan.
Right, the affordable housing plan talks about a desire or to see units in a building such as 611. And, but that's not, that's not a requirement. It doesn't allow us to tell a developer that they can't ask for or do more units or do a completely affordable building. That, the plan doesn't allow us to prohibit that.
Well, it's more than just the plan, right, Mr. Schein?
That's correct. So the plan itself is, as you stated, is a goal. It's not intended to limit, cap, or restrict any type of affordable housing. The Federal Fair Housing Act would trump any village plan that we have, along with the state acts that also require certain affordable housing requirements.
So let me just clarify this. So if we had a policy that said any building that's being built can have no more than 15% affordable units, let's not be polite, that would be illegal?
That would be illegal.
Okay. So, okay. Any other questions for Mr. Adler? All right. It's 9:20 right now. I'm actually going to suggest that we take a five-minute break for those who need to go to the restroom, because once we start public comment, I don't want to take a break in the middle of public comment. So we're going to recess for hopefully no more than seven or eight minutes and be back in session at 9:30. back in session at 9:30.
That's okay. So, Mr. Kaney, there's actually a couple more questions for you. So, if you would approach your podium, then we're going to move on to public comment. Trustee Dodd had a question for you.
Yes, I had one question that came up based on some material that was, some material you provided, which was really around the onsite property manager. You talked a little bit in your material that you submitted to us that you might treat this as a satellite office. And so, I'm just wondering, just before some of the residents might speak, will there be set, you know, I know, obviously, that this doesn't, this property doesn't qualify to have a full-time property manager and things like that. Will there be set days that the, the property manager might be there, or set times? Or do you see that this person, whoever is the, will there be one primary property manager? And would you see that this would be their office, such that they might be there more likely than if their office was in your technical properties?
Right. So, it would be one property manager.
Actually, would you, I, I've got some feedback. Would you, would you mind sort of awkwardly leaning into the microphone a little bit? People are, yeah, better. Thank you.
So, there would be one property manager who would be responsible for doing all the qualifications, all the income certifications, and working with the tenants. We would have a number of maintenance people, two or three maintenance people, and they would sort of rotate through, depending on the needs and the cleaning and that work. So, they would, they would be there on a regular schedule to do the cleaning work. The property manager, sort of using that office, we would determine what their schedule was. It's, it would be nicer to have someone closer to the buildings in Evanston, they wouldn't have to come in from the building. We'd sort of set days and hours. I don't know exactly what those days and hours would be. It may be, you know, Tuesday afternoon, Thursday afternoon, they're always in the building, or Monday, Wednesday, Friday mornings, or something like that. We'd set a schedule that gave them access to that building as well as sort of surrounding.
Okay, but for anybody who, but for anybody who wanted to get in touch with the property manager, they would have some sense of a set time that, that, that manager would be there Monday afternoons and Wednesday afternoons or something?
Right, and to see them in person, I, we would encourage them, we'd prefer that they call the office and talk with someone, set up an appointment, because everyone's going to show up at once and want to have immediately taken care of, but they would at least know what that schedule would look like, and they can be swamped then.
There was one other question that I saw on my list, that there was, there was a notion about whether the building was suitable for children, and, you know, and could families live in the building? That, families can live in the building, right?
Absolutely, yes. I mean, that's the, the idea, and, and one of the suggestions from the community was that needs to be more focused on families. If we had more space, if we had more FARs, if you gave me another floor or more space, whatever, I'd build three bedrooms and four bedrooms, I'd be happy to serve larger and larger and larger families if we could. It's not restricted against having families. Having two-bedroom units permits families. Again, it's, whether it's a, a couple with a child or a mom with a couple of kids, and definitely there will be some children, and the market study predicted something like 1.2 children. That's based on the market study standard. That may be the number of children there, it may be a lot more children. It's not restricted against that. In fact, I, I don't see any reason why it wouldn't be safe for children and, and encourage children. It's close to the schools, it'll be a good location. The selection process, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's the art of how you find people, but it's plenty safer children, that's not an issue.
Okay. All right, while he's there, any last questions, or can we move on to public comment? Thank you, sir. Don't go far. All right, so, before I begin public comment, I would like to allow people to register their support or their opposition to the proposed project without having to come up and address the board. So, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask people to raise their hands, either in support or opposition, we'll count each group, and we'll just include that in the record. So, trying to do this for, for people who may not want to... Mr. Dubb, let's, let's, please, and I'm going to actually address that, too, so. But please, we do need to keep order in the meeting. So, I will count each group, and we'll include that in the record. Of course, your participation in this exercise is completely optional, but for anybody who was here just to show support and wants to do it this way, that might save us some time as we go through public comment. So, if you'd like to express your support for the proposed project, please raise your hand now. All right, so, Tim, Tim and Mike, you guys count as well. Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to please maintain order. Thank you. That was my first count.
Okay.
Okay. So, we believe the number there is 43.
Approximately.
Approximately 43, if we put that in the record. All right, and then I'd also like to allow people to express their opposition to the project. Please raise your hand now. Okay, so let the record show that 20 people raised their hand. And again, that doesn't preclude you from speaking, but in case there were people who just wanted to show their support or express their opposition, that's what that was for. Now, may I see a show of hands from those people who would actually like to speak on the application? All right, so, given the number of people who wish to speak, let me remind everyone of the Village's written rules for public comment during a Village Board meeting. So, in order to give everyone a fair and equal opportunity to address the board, each person is allotted three minutes to speak, and individuals will only be allowed to address the board once tonight. I do ask speakers to be considerate of each other. Please be respectful of each other's opinions and refrain from commenting during the hearing unless it's your turn at the podium. Please refrain from applauding, booing, or otherwise making comments or any noise. Please address your comments to the board and not to others in the room. Also, as a matter of courtesy to those who are waiting patiently to address the board, please be concise and try to avoid repetition in your comments. If, if another speaker's already said what you had planned to say, you can certainly just say that you agree with the speaker before you that spoke. That will save time. Also, if you can use less than the three minutes, that would be appreciated. Mr. Frenzer, the Village Manager, will be responsible for watching the time for each speaker. He'll raise his hand when two and a half minutes have gone by, and then he'll, that will alert you that you have 30 seconds left. He will also let speakers know when their time is up. Again, please be considerate of those waiting who wish to be heard and conclude your remarks on time. With 22 people at three minutes each, that's 66 minutes. I did have a, a lengthy comment about this meeting going too late and what we were going to do, but that will take us only to about 10:30, quarter to 11:00, and I think we can get that in. So, I'm going to start with the back of the room. So, if you're not sitting in a yellow chair, and you're on the left side over there, my left, please come up and line up at the, at the podium for your turn to speak. Don't be shy, somebody's got to go first. And again, please, please state your name, where you live, and then also, if you would lean into the microphone, I have heard that, in particular, those, I don't have a problem because I'm pretty short, but for the taller folks, you really do sort of need to bend down awkwardly to speak into the microphone. So, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Sheila Schaper Hirsch. I live on the 1700 block of Central Avenue, which is relatively close to where Cleveland Place hopefully will be, and I am in favor of it. When I heard that this was going to happen, or possibly happened, there was a lot of hubbub in my neighborhood, so I decided to do some research. I found a very good report from the League of Women Voters that told me that affordable housing is a real and pressing issue for 16 percent of the Wilmette population. So, right there, I'm in favor of it, just for that. But I just want to read one thing for you. I found it very interesting a few minutes ago, when you said that the comprehensive plan is a goal, not a requirement. So, is that going to be an empty goal, or is it going to be something that you're really, really going to do? Are we going to stand up and be like other communities around us who have actually implemented affordable housing? This is a real and pressing issue. We need affordable housing in the community, and I urge you all to go for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome. You're definitely going to have to lean into the microphone.
Hi, my name is Emily Moline, and I live at 206 10th Street in Wilmette.
Hi, my name is Emily Moleens, and I live at 206 10th Street in Wilmette, and I am a senior at Loyola Academy. I am part of a group of students who have worked to promote Cleveland Place and its emphasis on the need for affordable housing in Wilmette. As members of this community, we believe that Cleveland Place poses an opportunity for Wilmette to become a more inclusive and equitable town. The value of affordable housing lies in the fact that it promotes vitality and a welcoming spirit in neighborhoods. Households that have access to affordable housing are more likely to give back to their communities due to achieved financial independence and security. Affordable housing should not bear the negative connotations that are unfortunately associated with its name. We shouldn't fear affordable housing, and the HODC has shown that applicants will undergo thorough screening to ensure that development residents will be a good match for our community. Wilmette is strong enough to embrace this low-income housing development with open arms and to invite deserving households to become fully fledged community members. Cleveland Place is a solution proposed by the established HODC to solve the epidemic of the lack of affordable housing plaguing the North Shore. There is a clear need for the more low-income housing options in our neighborhood, and it is our civil duty to answer this call. Wilmette has fallen short of its goal to make 15% of new residential developments consist of affordable housing units, and if we do not rise to the occasion now, then when?
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Kathy Miles. I live at 2007 Wilmette Avenue, so six houses away from the proposed development, and I oppose it. I think there's been some conversation here that's fallen short of completely candid. I don't want to say it's been untruthful, but I think there are some things that you all should know. There are some guidelines laid out for residential screening. There are some will-be disqualified and some can-be disqualified. Criminal activity is a can-be disqualified, and I think it's very interesting that Mr. Koenig did not speak to us about how many times he exercised his right to evict somebody or prevent somebody from moving in when he could, but he wasn't required to. And I think that's an important standard here, because we know that similar housing in Evanston had a lot of problems. And we know that there were a lot of police calls, but Mr. Koenig says, "Well, we haven't had those problems at our other facilities," and that's because 214 out of 300 of the units that are under management are seniors. They are not like this unit. Claridge in Evanston is like this unit, and we are concerned, living near it, that the management here, which is going to be remote, is going to lose some control over a facility when they weren't able to control it in a very nearby neighborhood. Tabs 14 through 19 of our previous submission to you have some of the police records at some of the other locations. The Highland Park Building that he talked about so glowingly also is a senior building, the one near the tracks. So when we talk about the parking that's needed, if you are right across the street from train tracks, it's not necessary to have a car. But unless these residents are going to buy their food at Treasure Island and their clothes at Joseph A. Banks, they're going to have to be able to transport themselves. So I'm concerned about the parking. We have 16 parking places, I mean, we have 16 tenants and 20 parking places, but we can have up to 44 people. There's going to be no screening of people under 18, which, by the way, is also a concern. While we keep talking about family housing, and I know that he said his market study showed there would be 1.2 children in the home, even the best projections of children right now, their own market study is telling you they won't live there. But when we have affordable housing, what are our goals? Our goals, I believe, and the reason I believe this is because it's in the plan, is to have some kind of integration into a community, to offer a hand-up, to offer an opportunity for children to have a changed outcome. The way we meet people in Wilmette is not by going and knocking on the door of an apartment building where a bunch of poor people were dropped...
Half a minute.
Were dropped in the middle of an affluent neighborhood, but where parents can meet the parents of other children who are attending schools. That won't happen here. But as to the home values, I want to tell you, I've spoken to four real estate agents and two appraisers who have told me that my home will be worth less if this goes up. Now, you can talk all you want about national market studies, but unless a study is done here to determine that our home values won't be impacted, you can't grant these variances. Ours will be, and all of the national studies will tell you that the more affluent the neighborhood, the more the impact on the home values that are there. I'd ask you to deny this.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm short, so I think this works really well. My name is Chris Lee. I live at 425 Pine Manor Drive. I have lived here with my family since 2003. And before I get started, and perhaps this will not go against my three-minute time limit, I do want to thank HODC and Mr. Koenig for bringing this development to the village two years ago. And I think it really has prompted the village and the community to have a dialogue on the issue of affordable housing issues and increasing the stock in ways that Village frankly had not done it before. And this wasn't done in context of 611 or Artest or even the Melancrot. So I think this is a very useful exercise and productive exercise. Now, I fully embrace the objectives, the reasons, and desire to increase the affordable housing stock in Wilmette. But as for this particular plan by this particular developer for this particular type of development, I oppose. And let me just make two points, that I'm going to, with the time permitting, balance those two points. The first is a track record. This developer has been in business for a long time, and in those years, it has built up quite a bit of track record. And we have heard a lot about alleged success at other places. And I think it's fair to say, yeah, they've been successful for certain types of housing developments, but those aren't the ones that they're proposing to build here. They're trying to build 100% low-income rental-based, non-exclusively limited to senior project, and that's not what they have in Highland Park, Glenview, elsewhere. The only project that comes close to this development is one in Evanston, is Claridge. And they're having materials submitted to you and summarized in tabs 14 through 19, and there's a response by the Evanston Police Department dealing with problems in tab number 16. So as for the track record, I think they have a horrible track record with respect to this type of low-income housing.
You have half a minute left.
Okay. Second is density. And what I've heard, what I've observed, is that all the variances that they want are self-created. It's not like they have a physical limitations that prevent them from doing certain things. It's their desire to pack in as many units as they can, and in fact, have 44 people packed into a lot that's no larger than a single-family lot. And they don't have to do that. They can make it smaller, more dignified, more humane, and more habitable. And balancing those two issues, I think those are independent issues. I mean, I think strength in one could overcome the other, but here you've got two weaknesses. So for those reasons, I ask you respectfully to say no, and tell them to go back to the drawing board, come back, and make it smaller. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Mary LaShaunesee. I live at 321 Davis Street in Evanston, and I attend Loyola Academy. I just want to speak very quickly, I don't have a prepared comment, but about the differences between Claridge Place and this building. I've seen a lot of parallels drawn between the Claridge Apartments, but they have so much more different than they have similar. Unlike the Claridge Apartments, which offers, I think, 48 people residents, this at max has 44, but likely will have far fewer residents than that. The Claridge Apartments also offer a voucher system, which will not be in place here. And this project is far more similar to the Hyacinth Apartments, which are another HODC housing project, which are not for seniors. So to say that all the successful HODC projects are for senior residents is absolutely not true. They have successful products. And the Hyacinth Project shares in common with this proposal that it is a newly-built building instead of a renovated building, and so it shares more in common with this proposal and is a very successful project. It's an award-winning green building and is far more similar to this than Claridge Apartments is. So to use that as an example of why this proposal should be rejected is simply inaccurate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move over now to people who are on my right side that are sitting in the blue chairs. If you'd like to speak, please come forward.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Caroline Goldstein. I live at 1426 Lake Avenue in Wilmette. Actually grew up in Wilmette. And when I came back to Wilmette 15 years ago to raise my family, one of the first things I did was join the Board of Housing Opportunity Development Corporation. I served on the Board for about 10 years with committed and inspirational people like Jean Cleland, a longtime Wilmette resident, people who were committed to finding strategies and solutions to help residents stay on the North Shore and to bring new residents to our community to contribute and make our community successful. I believe that, I ask you to consider this proposal and approve it. I think HODC has outlined how they have met the benefits that are currently outlined in our zoning ordinance for the PUD variances, and I think I ask you to have the confidence and the courage to follow our existing zoning ordinance and approve this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome, sir.
My name is Dave Weisell. I live on Sandy Lane in Wilmette, and I'm opposed to the project for a number of reasons. And I'm pretty concerned that, I've heard Richard's pitch four or five times now, and he gives a very good pitch, and I agree with a lot of the things he says, but a lot of them are not really backed up with the facts. And some of the things we talked about with, he doesn't like to compare this project to Cleveland or to Claridge, but in the meantime, there's the properties that he continually compares to are senior housing. There's two 12-unit buildings that he manages in Skokie that have a lot of same problems, police calls constantly. We have a list of them. Some of them, it was like 35 calls in 17 months. The other one was 11 calls in five months. These are not well-run buildings, and I'm afraid that that's what's going to happen here. And I don't believe the chart of the property values at all. It's impossible for someone to say that you're going to put a low-income, 100% low-income housing building in the middle of Wilmette and property values could go up. That's ridiculous. I can't, we looked for any type of a study that showed low-income housing in an affluent suburb, can't even find one, because nobody's done one, as far as we can tell. And I think that's an unfair comparison, and this project will impact people, especially the ones close to the facility, and I think it's going to be way more than the 0% to 5% that they're estimating. I don't believe that for a minute, and I would like to see you reject it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
My name's Andy Reese. I live at 411 Pine Manor Drive. Well, Wilmette needs more affordable housing. This proposal is too big and too dense for the variances requested and the limited benefit to Wilmette. The young lady had spoken regarding Hyacinth up in place, I believe it is, up in Highland Park. That property there does give precedence to people who live in Highland Park due to the ownership structure of the building. It is not 100% rental building. So again, you're getting towards ownership, and people take pride in ownership, and they What I'd like to know is, how is the application process for Claridge different from Cleveland Place? And how is the tendency of Claridge not going to be the tendency of potentially Cleveland If you have 48 people living in one structure, yet at the same time you have 20% problems in there, and the problems are not lighthearted problems, and they still don't have onsite management at that property, when are they going to put onsite management to clean up that property and to take more control of it? If we don't ask for something like this now, we're never going to get it, okay? Also, will this project accept Section 8 vouchers? And does he also accept PSH? Do you know, does anybody know what PSH is on the Board?
We read all the materials.
Oh, okay, just making sure. He doesn't have the capabilities to manage that type of a property from afar, because that is a lot of the clientele that he takes care of over at the Claridge Apartments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, I deny, I would respectfully ask you to deny this permit and ask him to go back to the drawing board and bring something that fits our community better than the structure that he's proposed now.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Mary Lyman. I live at 630 8th Street, and you guys need taller things here. Okay, so I walked around the property. I think it was first proposed like two years ago. I don't remember. And I personally thought it was small, and I know you guys have had tons of meetings and blah, 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 but it's a very, very small property for a building I feel that this size. From an environmental standpoint, like when they speak of bile swales, I don't see where that's going to fit, you know, between the sidewalk and stuff. And I'm walking in that area a lot or biking, whatever, whatever. I know there's a bus structure there, I think, still. Am I right? Then there's, is there a garbage can as well? There's kind of like a very cemented garbage can. You've got the gas station right there. If I was a mom and had kids, I would be a little concerned, you know, bringing a family, because that area is pretty congested and, I don't know. And I did see a bad accident there within the past week. I also know that there's very limited public transportation. So I'm looking at, you know, what the people are earning, how, so you're living in that building, how are you going to be able to afford a car? With that said, you put gas in the car, you have to pay for insurance, la, la, la. I just, so again, there's only bus service Monday through Friday. It's limited hours, pretty much during the rush hour. No bus service available on, well, obviously Saturday, Sunday, and holidays. So, you know, I just, it's a mile to the DuO. It's .6 to Treasure Island. If you're a senior and going to Melancrot, you know, for the senior center, it's .7. .7 to pool tennis, half a mile to Centennial Park, a mile to Downtown Village Hall. I mean, it's great in good weather, but if it's solid ice, it's very dangerous to get here. Yeah, I just, I don't know. I think it's probably, we do need, you know, housing for seniors and especially for, you know, functioning adults with handicapped or mental handicapped who can live on their own. I think it would be just amazing to have that facility in Wilmette.
I have half a minute left.
There, I think closer even to Village Center might be better, where there's, you know, they can get to public transportation. But, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, how many rows do we have? One, two, three, four. So I guess the last, can I see, show of hands on this side in the front, yellow, how many people? All right, so not the first three rows, but everybody behind the first three rows, please come up. I just don't want people standing in line for 20 minutes. We can avoid it.
I don't have to bend very far. I'm Mary Lee Cole. I live at 822 Central. I think I've been at every meeting since this process for this began, and nobody has mentioned that the village board appointed a committee that was done by the village, by the trustees, correct? The committee that did the study of this?
What year?
Plan Commission, you mean?
This year. There was a study committee appointed that did a report on this.
Well, the Plan Commission is appointed by the village board. That's a standing commission.
Oh, so that was a standing commission?
Yes.
Who studied that?
Like the zoning board, the Plan Commission.
Okay. I didn't realize that. I thought it was a specially-appointed group. But I was very, very impressed with the depth of the study that they did and the information that they gave. And four out of five of those people voted that, or stated that they thought that this would be a good development. So I hope that you will vote yes on this plan. I was at the meeting where, some years ago, where Wilmette Village residents requested some changes, and I believe that Richard Koenig did every possible change that he could in response to them, made it more, more two-bedrooms so that families could be accommodated, made it environmental. And I think it's a good, I think it's a good plan for this site, and if people can't manage to have a car, then I don't think they'll choose to live there. So anyways, in this time of huge income disparity, I hope that you will vote yes, yes in our backyard to help people...
You have half a minute.
...who are just trying to live and let us be proud to be Wilmette residents. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm Carol Moscandreas. Is that, oh, should I bend over more?
That's actually sounded pretty good to me, but...
Okay. I'm... Okay. I'm a retired attorney, living at 1616 Sheridan Road, Unit 8F. I'm also a former executive director of the homeless shelter programs in Evanston that were called Connections for the Homeless.
Now, now you may need to continue to speak up a little bit more.
Okay. And the secret I will tell you about, although it wasn't really a secret, but I bet you don't know this, is that Glendale and Consortium of Churches in the North Shore, including Wilmette, had shelter programs for families under Connections for the Homeless. And so I think I can tell you something about the population you might be seeing. First of all, I'd like to point out that I moved to Wilmette partly because of your wonderful con, stand on being open to affordable housing. You've made a really dramatic statement in your comments of your affordable housing plan when you say the village will provide affordable county, affordable housing options, will provide affordable housing options. And the reason you're doing that, according to the plan, is because you want to make Wilmette a place where persons, and this is almost a quote, "with moderate income can enjoy the benefits of living in our community," and where residents can enjoy the benefits of a community with economic diversity. The village policy recognizes economic reality. Affordable housing is not created by market forces. It is created because government has a policy of working with developers and not-for-profits to assure that affordable housing options are created. The promise of providing affordable housing options embodied in the 2004 plan has not shown brightly. Since 2004, only 140 affordable housing units have been created in Wilmette. Only 140. 70% of those are open only to seniors. 30% are open to seniors and disabled people. There are no zip nada affordable housing units in Wilmette.
You have half a minute.
Primarily based on income and eligibility. However, 10% of Wilmette's residents have incomes of $35,000 or less. A single person with that income is eligible for affordable housing. Putting it another way, there are roughly 2,730 Wilmette residents who would qualify by income for the affordable housing project you're considering. Our neighbors in this situation are on edge.
Time's expired.
Okay? I'm not suggesting that you provide, you okay a bad project. This, however, is a good one, and it has many benefits that I think are clear, and you would therefore be moving finally into an area where Wilmette has said it wants to go, providing affordable housing for people who are income-challenged.
Right. Time's expired. Thank you, ma'am. Welcome, sir.
Hi, my name's Tom Bear. I live on Meadow Drive, so I'm walking distance from the site. I also have an antique booth at Heritage Trail Mall, so I'm very familiar with the Wilmette Avenue and Ridge corridor and how congested it is. I'd like to say a few things. One is that I'm all for affordable housing. I think it would be great. However, I also assume we have building codes for a reason, and they're asking for a bunch of variances. What I'd like to say is that we all pretty much have one of these, and in this day and age, I can push one touch on button on this and talk to my niece and see a picture of her in Australia. Seems to me that in three years, these guys ought to have been able to figure out how to build a building that could fit on that site without needing variances. It just seems like there needed to be some creative thinking, and if they want to go back to the drawing board and build a, a building that'll fit within the site without needing variances, I'd be all for it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm John Marshall. I live at 822 Prairie Avenue. I've lived in Wilmette with my family since 1994. And the question is, does this project provide substantial public benefit? And I believe strongly that it does. By providing a 94% reduction in stormwater runoff, that would be a great public benefit when the village is considering spending tens of millions of dollars, perhaps even more, to try to solve our stormwater management problem. Any reduction in runoff and the use of, is a benefit, and the use of the bioswale could be a, a model for us in the future. I believe that the green status is a benefit for reduction of energy consumption, also a model for other buildings. To set aside for people with disabilities so that they can live in our community is a public benefit. Set aside for veterans who have served our country is a public benefit. They should be able to live in our community. And most important, this project will help the village really take a step forward to meet its goal finally for affordable housing. This is a concrete step that you all can take. The income level of $35,580, which would be the upper limit threshold, I did some research on the Bureau of Labor Statistics sites to try to find out who might be my potential neighbors who would be, who would be under that income level, who might live at Cleveland Place. Professions that make under that level include preschool teachers, includes pharmacy technicians, home health aides, nursing assistants, crossing guards, waiters and waitresses, barbers, hairdressers, concierges, childcare workers, retail salespeople, bank tellers, library assistants. Those are all people I think would be great to be able to afford, to live in our community of Wilmette. We've heard many speakers at this meeting, at the Plan Commission meeting, talk about, oh, there should be, apartments should be bigger, should be more landscaping, fewer units, should be nearer to mass transit, should maybe be near the Jewel on Green Bay Road so people can shop easier, should be close to parks so it would be easier for the children to play. That would all be splendid. That would be great if they could do that. But I think we know that there's very few places like that in Wilmette, if any, where someone could build and still actually be affordable. We're talking about very expensive housing if someone were able to do all those things and to find a spot to build it. So I think that.
Half a minute.
This location is the best we're going to be able to have for affordable housing, and I encourage you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Stuart McDermott. I live at 1762 Highland. Again, close to the, pretty close to the property. And I'm here to also give my support and ask you to approve the project. You know, I tried, I would say that affordable housing is a public good, and we need more of it. We don't have much in Wilmette. It's an opportunity to take a small number of units. Is it perfect? Of course not. But I actually think that the, some of the objections would be raised no matter where a project would be proposed. I took the time to go and ask questions about the developer and do some research, ask people who knew him, have known him for a long time, and I found his answers more than satisfactory and credible. And I'm actually, quite frankly, glad we have somebody who's willing to take the effort and, and come into this community and try to bring more affordable housing and more economic diversity a little bit. It could be very easy to just say, okay, there's this opposition, I'm going to pack up and go home. And finally, I would just say, as far as some of the arguments, I've heard several arguments in the last 10 minutes about things such as the dignity of the people living there, like, we're protecting these people. And I would argue the dignity, the walking to the Jewel is too small. Okay, in a perfect world, it'd be bigger. Maybe in a perfect world, they'd be closer to Jewel, but let's not sell these people short who are going to live there. Let's give them the opportunity to, to come to our community and have a chance to live in this community in an affordable way. So I strongly support the proposal, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so, the first three rows of the right side here, again, my right. Welcome.
My name's William Shulton. I live at 1041 Ridge in Wilmette, and I thank you all for having, see, had the foresight to develop an affordable building in Melancroft. It's a wonderful building. It's a wonderful community. I'm greatly in supportive of this effort, so much so that I'm also a board member at H O D C. I ask you to consider the number of opportunities we've had to approve projects like this in Wilmette. They've been very few and far between. Let's not miss this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
I'm Sally Daniels from 1611 Wilmette Avenue, which would be three blocks down east of this project that we hope will be supported here. We moved to our house 50 years ago. We knew it was a busy street. We loved the neighborhood because it was already with policemen and teachers. It was more of a middle-income or low-income neighborhood when we bought there, and that was part of what we liked about it. So I have watched Wilmette get bigger and more expensive and not be available to the breadth of people that we could serve. I think it's a great community. I thank you for considering this. I hope you will support it. We certainly do.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
I'm John Daniels. I'm married to Sally, who just talked to you, and it may not surprise you to know that I agree with her. I should tell you that when she talked about the middle-class and lower-middle-class nature of our neighborhood when we moved in, you all think, I'm sure, of Wilmette as an affluent community, and it is. But it was different, and it's become more affluent over time, and we've certainly watched it do that. Thinking of Wilmette as gentrifying is kind of amusing, but it's true. We, we looked at the kinds of folks who lived around us as we were preparing to come over here once upon a time. Factory workers, blue-collar workers of all kinds, teachers, firemen, policemen, retail workers. Remarkable. They're not there anymore, at least the ones that, that we knew that have survived. It would be really a good thing to encourage more diversity within the village. It would be good for all of us as much as for the people who would move in. And so, we do urge you to accept this plan and take advantage of an opportunity that H O D C is providing to us. I think we're very fortunate to have that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, last section is the yellow section to my left. Who would like to be heard on this? Okay, so, let's do the first two rows of people that want to speak. So, and the, and the next, next row, there were some people that wanted to speak as well. Come on up.
Hi, my name's Lisa Bergonsa. I live at 2125 Washington. I have been speaking in favor of this terrific development for quite some time. Many parents of kids with disabilities are not able to be here because they have tremendous demands on their time. And a lot of people with disabilities also aren't able to be here. I'm a mother of a son with autism who has benefited amazingly from this community. He has gone from being almost non-functional to attending high school and now looking at college. It is amazing what can happen when you have the right kind of support. That's true not just for people with disabilities, but it's also true for lower-income people who are running into problems. This community has so much to offer, and I personally, selfishly, and, and on behalf of my family and on behalf of the families I know who also have members, like kids with disabilities, it is such a, an important thing for kids to be able to stay in the same community where they are known by the police department, where they're known by the fire department, where they know, they're known at the library, where they can get jobs at retail within this community, where they can participate in park district activities. That's something that this community offers. The one thing this, really, just about the only thing this community doesn't have to support people with disabilities who very, very often are low-income is housing. So, that, it's such a big gap. There are hundreds in, in Wilmette, and I know that they have tremendous demands on their time, and they can't be here. And so I hope that you'll just take this as, you know, I, I hope that I can speak for them in saying, there hasn't been someplace where those kids could live, and this would be a fabulous opportunity. I support everyone else getting to live there to lower-income people. I mean, there's a lot of things that can drive you into being low-income.
You have half a minute.
And health problems can be one of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thanks. I'm Hannah McEnulty, and I live at 2145 Thornwood Avenue in Wilmette. I support the proposal, and I just want to point out that many of the arguments opposing the development of 1925 Wilmette Avenue have been heard in communities similar to ours across the country. Increased crime rates, increased local taxes, increased traffic, and lower home values. A study out of Tusk University looked at some of the most controversial proposals in Massachusetts that were completed before June 2006, and the study provides significant evidence that the fears of new affordable housing developments are far more, far more myth than reality. After construction was completed, controversy faded, and concerns were unrealized, many surrounding neighbors were unaware there even was a housing, affordable housing project nearby. Those that opposed the project have expressed their concerns, and Richard Koenig has addressed them in his new proposal. We should be a part of the solution to poverty in our state, in our county, and in our village. We can welcome 10 individuals and six families in our, into our community and make it work. Let's not let fear drive the decision. We have great resources, and we should show them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, members of the Village Board.
Can I ask you to speak up?
Yes, you can.
I'm certain people in the back will come here.
My name is Paul Kesselman. My wife and I live at 1933 Wilmette. We are the house directly west of the project. I'd like the panel, the board, to not base their decision on fear. My opposition to the project is not based on fear. It's based on the law. The Planning Commission incorrectly granted and recommended granting the variances to the petitioner. The reason why they did that.
Sir, again, I'm just going to ask you to speak up so people in the back can hear you.
Sure.
Or lean in further, yes.
I'll try to lean in further. The Planning Commission incorrectly granted the variance, incorrectly recommended granting the variance, excuse me, without taking into account the impact to the village and nearby homeowners. They did not require sufficient benefits to the village. They, they gave short shrift to the requirements that there be a benefit to the village, and every close call, whether it's the FAR, whether it's the storm, water, every close call, they gave to the, to the petitioner. Sometimes it's right. In this case, it's not. The only benefit to the village truly is that it gives the village a low-income housing project. And that's, that is a valid goal, one that I support. This is the wrong project for this site. The Planning Commission heard evidence from the village engineer. He testified that the water management was really what was required by the village code. The village, the, the Planning Commission decided to make that a benefit. Planning Commission heard evidence saying that the adverse impact to the property values would be about 5%. Today, we've seen numbers anywhere from 8% on the high side to 4.9% on the low side. Those numbers are meaningless because we don't know how they were. Those numbers are meaningless because we don't know how they were gathered. We don't know how they were calculated.
You have half a minute.
A 5% decrease on a $500,000 house is a significant adverse impact to the homeowners in the area. The traffic is adversely impacted, as trustee saw this morning. It's not a good area to have an extra cutout, an extra 20 cars come in and out, even if all of them don't have cars.
Time's expired. If you could wind up, please.
Just one last sentence. Even if they all don't have cars and they Uber, as one of the Planning Commission members said that they can Uber, Ubers are cars, and cars have to come in and out of the property. It's just going to add more congestion and less safety to that area. Thank you all for listening to me. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, if I could have the rest of the folks on this side that want to speak come line up, and then we will conclude. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Patrick Duffy. I live at 932 Illinois Road. I'm a member of our zoning board, and I was looking at this just from that perspective. And this is something that, just from the sheer size of the building, is something that I think that we would have asked them to go back and reduce to try and get, to ask for less of a concession. The second point regarding the size of the building, recently you approved the senior housing that's going on Ridge, and that's going to impact a number of homeowners in that immediate area. And I think that if you approve this project as it's proposed, you'd be compounding that impact on those homeowners, and that really should be taken into consideration. The other question I had was, the applicants had said that they took into consideration the neighbors' concerns, and they made it more family-friendly, so they created six two-bedroom units out of ten studios. So it didn't seem that they took other concerns of the neighbors into consideration, which was reducing the size of the project. And the last question that came up with was for the applicant. In their proposal, they stated that they have criteria for the applicants to qualify for the building, and they made a comment that if someone breaks these rules, they have a special document that's attached to the lease that allows them to evict a tenant for breaking some of these qualifications, such as drug use or whatever it may be. My question is, does that document actually help them shortcut an eviction process? Because if you have a bad tenant, using Cook County's arduous and tenant-friendly eviction process, it could take you four to six months to get rid of a tenant. And so I'm hoping for their benefit that this extra document that they attach to leases would aid them to speed the eviction of a bad tenant. But all in all, I think that just the project needs to be a little smaller in scope in order to be appropriate for the size of the lot that it's on and have less impact for those immediate neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm short enough to be heard, I think, with this microphone.
Just be sure to speak up.
Okay. I'm Judy Goody. I live at 436 Prairie. I've lived in Willmett for 44 years. In the eighties, in the late eighties, I served on the Plan Commission when we were working on a major modification to the comprehensive plan, and housing then was a very big issue. And over the years, the plan has developed and is becoming more and more, I think, inclusive and specific about what we need to do to ensure fairness. I also served on the zoning board in the early 2000s. And as you all know, I know, we have provisions for variations for a reason. If someone gets a variation by meeting the requirements of the code, then it is legal. And I know that you consider the variations as part of the entire project here. I did want to observe that over the decades, I have heard the same arguments proposed each time some type of affordable housing has been proposed. We've been through these discussions periodically. The arguments haven't changed too much. I think it's time for us to mature as a village and bring affordable housing to people of all ages, not limited to seniors, which is essentially what we've done until now. We are ready for it, and there is a need for it. There's also a need in our community and in the bigger community of our country to avoid the fear of changes like this in our community patterns. We need to be careful not to stereotype low-income people. As many speakers before me have mentioned, there are a lot of working people who earn incomes within the range that will be covered by the housing that's proposed tonight. We need to have a place for them in our community. Willmett should be part of the solution rather than contributing to the problem of fear and division, which seems to be around us today. So I hope that you will do the right thing and approve this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
My name's Karen Hogan. I live at 716 20th Street. And the last time we were here, we were talking about the traffic and the traffic, whatever they did, the testing they did during off-peak hours. As a person who travels that corridor multiple times a day, particularly after school hours, getting from my house to that corner to make a right or a left takes sometimes 20 minutes to get around and then to come back. It's the same arduous thing. If it's rush hour or if it's after school, that is a very, very, very busy intersection. So I'm curious whether they changed when they actually did the testing as to say whether this would impact or not. Across the street is another apartment building, so between the two of them, I can only see that this would further create challenge. And if they were to have two cars in each home, then would they have to go on the street parking, which would further impact their neighbors? And I happen to come from New York City, and I have experienced, you know, low-income housing, and it starts out good, but let me tell you, with duration, it usually goes south like it did in Evanston. And then the people who live closest struggle, and then they want to get the heck out. I moved here for the school system. Yes, we need affordable housing, but one of the greatest benefits of our community is our public school system, which is why I moved here to this community when I came from New York City. And this is why I stayed here. Now my kids have grown. I don't need to be here anymore, but I still want a safe community. And there was a woman who was here the last time you were here, and she's an attorney in the town, and she went to the different properties, and she went to the police departments, and she got information. And yes, there is statistically some challenges around some of the properties. And so if a house has to have cameras everywhere, I mean, that in and of itself is troubling, that the people that are creating this feel the need that they have to supervise the people that they're going to let into their homes and therefore into our communities. So yes, we want people to come into our home, but we want to make sure that they also are safe people for our children that are walking there to and from school and for the community at large. Drugs trafficking in the Evanston property, the police coming. She interviewed some people that lived there.
Yeah, for a minute, please.
Thank you. That lived there that were, what would you call, you know, not so comfortable with their environment, and yet they felt stuck, and they did not feel safe in their own accommodations. So I think that yes, we need affordable housing, but I'm not sure we need this affordable housing.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Bettiana Johnson. I live at 246 West Morland Drive.
You're going to need to speak in a little bit more. There you go.
I thought I was short enough. I live at 246 West Morland Drive, and I've been here since 1993, and I'm all for affordable housing, as a lot of people mentioned here, if it concerns elderly or disabled or residents of Willmett or relatives of residents of Willmett. But in this case, I don't think the concern with crime can just be dismissed. My personal example is, as recently as two years ago, I had to move my parents out of Skokie because they no longer felt safe walking in the street. It's just on the other side of Old Orchard, and there's been a big rise in low-income housing, Section 8, and these are the same type of people who are going to apply for this house, I'm sure. So you can't say that it's somehow different. And so, yeah. So basically, the last two years also, crime went up in Willmett. I mean, we're talking about carjackings and breaking into cars. Where do these people come from? Oh, well, right across, right across Old Orchard, you could tie the two things together, I think. So 50 people is not a small number of people, and it could cause some issues in the neighborhood. So, yeah. That's just my take.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Board President. My name is Mike Lieber. I live at 2035 Hollywood Court in Willmett. It's about two blocks away from the proposed site. I'm in favor of it, but I would suggest one little tweak if you do end up voting in favor of it, and it kind of goes to an issue that trustees Dodd and Kersman raised related to possible traffic issues on Willmett Avenue, and also, Board President, that you raised related to the bike lane master plan. That section of Willmett Avenue, from Ridge Road at the east to Crawford and Hunter at the west, is that two- or arguably four-lane section that at least people who drive it every day know that people treat it as four lanes and, more importantly, treat it essentially as a Speedway. You know, I know that as part of the master plan for bikes, there's talk about road calming. I know there are issues because, I believe it's a state road, and there are all sorts of complications with that. But ultimately, the solution might be to turn that quasi-four-lane road into two-lane, one lane in each direction with a shared center lane, turn lane, kind of like how there is on sections of Lake Avenue. Given that that's not the case yet, the area where the development is, where people will be entering and exiting the parking lot, is kind of right at the beginning of the turn lane as you're heading east toward Willmett Avenue. So it's a troubling spot for people to be turning left out of there, west onto Willmett Avenue. I think, and the police chief can certainly correct me, I believe it's illegal to cross left over a W O line like that, or if you're coming east from Ridge Road to turn left into the parking lot. I think the solution to that problem would be for the entrance of the parking lot to have one of those kind of curved V wedge-type things so that cars could only enter if they're coming west on Willmett Avenue, or coming from the west on Willmett Avenue, heading east so they could turn in, making a right, and when they're leaving, they would turn right and out. It would ease those issues. It would also set the stage for more easily doing the road calming in future years, having bike lanes. And while it would cause a little bit of hardship for people pulling in, pulling out, having to, you know, maybe go a little bit out of their way, I think it would increase public safety, and it would also preserve that section of Willmett Avenue for road calming and, you know, future use for bike lanes as we connect east Willmett through downtown, up Washington or Highland, down to Ridge, across that section of Willmett Avenue, potentially all the way out on Glenview Road to connect with the North Branch Trail. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. So we're through with public comment now. I guess I would ask Mr. Koenig to come back up. You have the final word, if you like it. I also, frankly, you know, why don't we start? There are a few questions that were raised that if I could just pose them to you. The one was a suggestion that you only, you primarily manage senior projects. Besides Claridge, which we discussed, are there other projects that you would liken to this project, and can you tell us a little bit about them?
Sure. Yes, so we have a number of family projects. And first, the original projects that H O D C did, the original project, the very first project we did was 1987, and the second project was 1994, and those are family buildings located in Skokie, near the Skokie Swift. One's 12 units, the other's 11 units. Those are all two-bedroom units. Those are family properties, and H O D C has managed those for over 20 years. No one who lives in that neighborhood even knows that those properties are affordable. They didn't know. The one way that people found out is that a couple of years ago, we were able to get some funding through the federal government program doing some stimulus money, and one of the requirements to give that stimulus money through the rehabs was to put a sign in the front yard saying, "This is federally funded with stimulus money." I got a call the day that sign went up from the Village Manager saying, "Take the sign down." People have started calling us. They're calling like crazy. They don't want this property to be affordable. They don't want us to put federal funding in there. They don't want affordable, low-income households living in this neighborhood. And he was able to tell them, "That property's been there, and it's been affordable for 20 years. None of you knew that it was affordable. Who's living there is not going to change. The people who lived there before are going to be the people that will be living there in the future." The only thing that's changed is they're actually doing rehab, they're doing improvements, they're improving the quality of the building. Had the sign not gone up, no one would have even known, and they wouldn't have had any idea at all. I think that's a property that is the most similar to the types of residents that will live here. They're folks that are working in the area, that live in the community. Once the property's up and built, no one will have any idea that they're there. We have another property in Evanston down near Howard and Ridge that is also a family building. It's about one and two-bedroom units. That was an acquisition rehab building. It has families that live there, that live in Evanston and work in Evanston, and very few issues, very little excitement, very few police calls, very few issues in that property despite it being a rehab, not a new building. It's one we're going to hopefully add cameras to, just because everyone thinks that's a good idea. But those two buildings, those are family buildings located in areas of high density that no one else even knows are in the neighborhood without the blinking red light that says this is affordable housing. They're simply folks that live there and are good neighbors for the community.
I'm just going to continue with some of the things. Thank you. That was very helpful. The question about the parking study, I thought the parking study was redone. Am I...
They did three counts of the parking study. There was, at the original Plan Commission meeting, there was, an issue was raised on the time when it was done, that it was a non-school day, and so the second count was done. There was an issue raised on the date of that one was, so they actually did three counts.
Okay. Okay. And then there was a question about your eviction process. Is it any easier or is it difficult?
The eviction process, when you go through the Cook County court system, following the legal process of going through all that, having that piece of paper adds additional ammunition for the attorneys to go through the eviction, and every bit of paper the attorneys will tell you, everything that you have that can document that helps facilitate the process.
Still, I'm sure not the most pleasant...
It's a cumbersome process.
Yes, okay. Okay. Great. All right. So are there any other questions for Mr. Koenig, and then I will offer him the opportunity, if he wants to, to say whatever he has as a final word? Yes, trustee Dodd.
I had one other, I had one question for you. During the public comment, there was some question or just kind of comparing the tenant pool at Claridge and what would be the types of people that would be living here. I just want you to clarify for me, since my understanding that the rent at Claridge and the rent in these two properties are different?
That's correct. The rent at Claridge is around $400 to $500 a month. The units here, the one-bedrooms are $615, and the two-bedrooms are $800.
Okay, so the income levels would be different from these people?
Correct.
So there is a difference in terms of the pool and who would be eligible?
At Claridge, it's much lower.
Okay.
It's also only single individuals. Here at this property, it would be, singles would be eligible, but it would also be couples and small families and other folks who would need that size unit. So the population mix is very different.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because there were some comments during public comment that seemed to say something otherwise. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions, Mr. Koenig? No, I'm sorry, ma'am. Public comment is over. Okay. So the podium is yours if you have any final words that you'd like to offer to us.
Thank you for your time and consideration. I really appreciate the opportunity to present a proposal and appreciate you guys considering it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? I don't see anybody jumping up to lead off, so I'm going to lead off tonight. All right. So as a level set here, the village's zoning code provides that during a planned unit development review, the benefits provided by the project... development review, the benefits provided by the project are to be balanced with the relief requested. That's the code. So reviewing first the relief requested, and I'm going to go in the order that it was in the Plan Commission report, which, that's on page three if you want to follow along. So first off, the building is conforming to the 30-foot height requirement, but relief is requested to allow for three stories instead of two and a half. This is not significant relief. It has been granted on several other projects in recent years. Now, the floor-area ratio, that is the most significant relief requested. But it is important to view the request in context. The bulk of the building in terms of lot coverage and height is conforming with the zoning code. The floor-area request is not conforming, and it's not immaterial. It's 1.36 is the request versus the limit of 1.0. And that is significant. However, if you look at that request in the context of the neighborhood's density, this is the existing density that exists in the neighborhood today, the density is not out of place, given the size and the floor-area ratio of the surrounding buildings. The floor-area ratio of the proposed project is comparable, and then the proposed project would add just 16 units to a neighborhood that has currently over 200 multifamily units already in place. Mr. Adler gave us some, a map with some diagrams on it, and there have been some statistics that I've seen, I don't think we presented them tonight, that show that the number of units per square foot of the lot is no higher than, matter of fact, lower than many of the other buildings in the neighborhood. Is that, that's, yeah. So he's nodding along on that. So that fact is extremely important because the comprehensive plan calls for maintaining residential densities at approximately existing levels. In most areas of the village, this project would not be considered consistent with existing residential densities. So let's move on to the other relief that's requested. The zoning ordinance requires 24 parking spaces for a project with 16 units. This project includes 20 parking spaces and requires a variance of four units, which frankly is easily justified by the experts' report. The zoning ordinance requires 50% of the parking units to be enclosed. Now, more than 50% of the parking units are located under the building, but they're not enclosed. And, you know, my personal view on this is that that's not a significant variance, given the location and layout of the site, the building design, as well as the parking configurations that exist in the neighborhood today. In addition, as has been referenced, the zoning ordinance does not allow parking required for dwelling units to be at grade, but this requirement has also been waived previously by the Village Board for certain new developments. That is the zoning relief that's been requested. Now, with regards to the benefits provided, the zoning ordinance specifically lists several ways for development to provide public benefit. These are not subject to debate. This is our law. These are our ordinances. There are four that are relevant here. Innovative stormwater management techniques, affordable or senior housing set-asides, provision of accessible dwelling units with features beyond what is required by the Americans with Disabilities Act, or the use of, or and the use of sustainable design and architecture. Now, with regards to stormwater, excuse me a moment. Sorry, I had a Marco Rubio moment there, needing to take a drink of water in between. So with regards to stormwater, all new developments in the village are required to properly manage their stormwater. And it's certainly going to be an improvement over existing conditions, but frankly, I don't place a lot of weight on the stormwater element here because basically, maybe a little bit more, but basically, you're meeting the requirements of the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District in the village. Clearly, clearly, the major source of public benefit is related to the affordable housing units. This includes set-asides for persons with disabilities, for veterans. This is workforce housing, okay? And this is a significant public benefit derived from the project. There is also a public benefit provided for exceeding the requirements of the American with Disabilities Act through the provision of two accessible units and four adaptable units. And finally, I won't steal trustee Wolf's thunder, the project also makes use of sustainable design and architecture, which again, provides some additional benefit. So these are the public benefits that are provided by the project. Now, by their very nature, all zoning reviews, but in particular, reviews of proposed planned unit developments are site-specific. So what's acceptable on one site within the village is often not acceptable at another location. So these are my conclusions for the proposed project at the proposed location. Balancing the relief requested on one hand with the public benefits provided by the project, I find the benefits clearly outweigh the relief requested. Further, I find the standards of review are met, including the project being consistent with the purpose and intent of the village's comprehensive plan. Simply viewed, simply viewed, this is a modest apartment building, being built within an appropriate zoning district, with a density that is consistent with the existing bulk and density already found in the neighborhood. Developers, an experienced developer with a very good reputation, the village is not imposing a mandate upon the developer, rather, the developer is voluntarily building affordable housing units. And one final point that I think is important, this is a private development. The village of Wilmatt is not providing any funding or any financial subsidies for the project. Frankly, I think this is truly a unique opportunity, and I will support the request. Okay? Who else would like to comment? Trustee Sullivan?
I filled in for, or I took the land use section, but first of all, I think that was very well said and could quickly wrap it up. And I broke it up in two parts, similar to what you did, and looked at, you know, took, sorry, took on, looked at this in two parts, and I'll take the easy part, easy part first, which is the affordable housing. And I think what has gone on over especially the last two to three years, since this project first surfaced, this has been a good challenge for the village. Because, you know, it's one thing to put it in our comprehensive plan and our goals, but as far as, long as I've been a trustee, as well as on the zoning, I think this is the first real development that I've ever looked at. And this challenged us as a community to say, "Do we stand by what we put in a goal? And do we really want this? And do we mean it?" And I commend the past residents and board who put that in there because it did challenge. And what resounding to me was, what I love about Wilmatt is, we do want to maintain and be a diverse community. This is not an exclusive community. And I was a little discouraged when, you know, Wilmatt has the reputation of the oxymoron, affordable housing on the North Shore, because I want to make sure Wilmatt is affordable to everybody. And I think this is a good initiative and a good, it was a good practice for us. It was a good, healthy discussion. It challenged me to make sure, do I really want this for the community? And I hope that as we promote future development in Wilmatt, that this is an ongoing discussion. And I hope we do develop, and we've got some great opportunities that we want to promote development in Wilmatt and promote all types of housing. So I can obviously welcome this. I agree that, you know, we went through some chat, you know, some of the conversation, good developer, bad developer, and some of the issues and what was in the press. And hopefully, I'm going to take the side that sometimes negative press writes the stories, and sometimes some of the good is, of what they provide is missed. And in this case, I did find a lot of very good comments on H O D C and a good reputation. So I, and I hope that, you know, over the last three years, as they've gone through this process, they learned what, a little bit more of what Wilmatt is and what we're looking for. And I have confidence that they did listen, making through some of those changes. Like President Blinsky said, going through the P U D, I got very comfortable with the, you know, it is, we have to be a little bit flexible in this development, you know, as far as the law and 26.5E. I went through the three, and I agree that, you know, the water side is definitely a benefit, it's definitely a benefit from what's there now. But it would be on any other development, really, it is number eight, which is, this promotes affordable housing. And so, you know, for me, it qualifies there. So I got over that part. The harder part was the zoning, you know, and as one of the speakers said, you know, our job is to always try and reduce some of the zoning variations. In this case, there were five. Really, the two that stood out for me was both the parking and the F A R. Parking, I got comfortable with because even though it's not enclosed, it is covered. I think most people will drive by this and not notice the cars parked there. It won't be an impact. At most, it could be 20 cars. I don't think it'll be a high impact to the traffic. And I think, you know, when you think of potentially an alternative, and some people said it could be a commercial property, it could be office, it could be studio, you would actually see a lot more cars and a lot more activity throughout the day. So this isn't, this is, I can live with this, this variation. The F A R, you know, is always one. That's a sensitive one, as we know, on the zoning. And at 1.35, is this appropriate for this use? It is a small lot. I think, you know, when you look at it, I try to figure out ways that you can minimize it, but, you know, I think this is actually reasonable, given the overall density in this location. And I think most, by the time it's up and built, we're going to drive by it, and it's going to be part of our community. And it's not going to stand out or be something that will be, oh, there's that development. I actually think, most people may not even notice it, or we're, or they'll be proud of what we've developed, and I could, I can support it as well.
Trustee Plunkett.
I'll go.
And I'm going to tell you in advance to lean in.
I will lean. I will lean and direct, not toward you. But I, I do want to reiterate what President Blinsky said about the P U D process. I think that as a board, and certainly the boards prior to me being on this board, in reviewing P U Ds, I don't think these, these variances are that different. I don't think they're that significant from other P U Ds that we have granted for frankly lesser benefits. But that has been said, and I don't want to go through more on that process or on our process. I think what I want to focus on is that I think it's important for everybody in this community that this be a successful project. And so I think that the fact that we have taken this apart bit by bit to, to get answers to the questions, certainly, there are no guarantees, and we cannot answer every question. But I came in here kind of with a checklist of, you know, what is outstanding, what can we answer? It is in Wilmatt's interest that this be successful, it is in the neighbor's interest that this be successful, and it is certainly in H O D C's interest that this be a successful project. So some of the checklist items that I, I wanted answers for and that we've been answering, you know, over a long period of time, is understanding the tenant selection plan, understanding how the background checks would work and who they would apply to. Certainly, this is probably the only dwelling in Wilmatt where we're going to, you know, know more about these residents than anywhere else. Security cameras, check. Parking, we have answers to, one space per unit. The maintenance reserves, we have answers to. Now comes the, the personal part of some of the H O D C concerns. And I don't remember, and I don't know, that we've ever picked apart a developer and, as a board, and said, you know, "Can you develop this project?" But I think we have heard success stories, and I was concerned about some of the properties in Evanston. I reached out to alderwoman Ann Rainey, and I had a discussion with her, and she said, "Please, share this with everybody." She is the alderwoman in the ward that handles the Brummel Apartments and the Callan Apartments. And she wanted, the first thing she said to me, the Brummel Apartments, they're 13 units, one and two-bedroom. And she said, "99.9% of the people in the neighborhood have no idea that this is run by H O D C." She's had similar, similar things to say about the Callan Apartments, and she had good things to say about the H O D C and thought they were running a very nice building. I asked her about the Claridge Apartments, which is not her ward, but I did ask her. And she said there were problems initially, and that was her understanding that there has definitely been a turnaround. I feel more comfortable with that. This is another check off my list. Because the most important thing for us is that this be successful. And so, you know, when we talk about the opportunities for affordable housing, have been few and far between in Wilmatt. This is one, and this is small. This is 16 apartments. I think we, we can't forget this. This is not, this is not a, a big development. This is only 16 apartments. And I think 16 apartments is manageable, and I think 16 apartments can be successful, and I, I think it's a good thing for Wilmatt.
Thank you, trustee Plunkett. Trustee Dodd's leaning into her microphone.
Unless trustee Wolf would like to go.
Oh, go ahead. We haven't heard from that side.
You're on that side.
Trustee Dodd, you have the floor.
I agree with everything that the previous trustees had said, and I thought they were very eloquent in what they said. So I'll try to address some things that are slightly different. First of all, I'm a relatively new trustee, besides trustee Kersman next to me. So this is a new process for me, and I think it's relevant to, for many of you in the room, and that's why I want to address it. We have variances, we have rules and regulations so that we do the right things in our community. But all of us know, it's never black and white. And I'm sure many of you in this room have needed a variance for something you've built on your own home. And that's important. And it's why we need to look at, it's why we have this P U D process, really. Because sometimes, when you look at a particular property, the site of the property, as President Blinsky spoke to, what's around that property, sometimes, the variances don't always fit. And to some degree, I think that's the case here. And I've learned that, and I want to thank everybody in the staff who has helped me over the last week to really understand that. And so I too think that while I recognize that these variances are some that are larger than others, the F A R being the big one, for the location that we're talking about and what else is around this, I think that this, I'm comfortable with that particular, with this request. I'd also like to say that I agree with some of the things that trustee Plunkett said. I came in with a list of issues that I wanted to make sure were addressed, and I want to thank the applicant for doing such a nice job in addressing those. The thing that really struck with me was when I asked, "What are the things that you learned from?" We all make mistakes. Clearly, not every property is going to be successful. And I appreciate your honesty and your recognition that you have learned from these things. And I think the things that you outlined, that you learned in terms of you, who could be the best property manager, how to have security cameras, some of the other things that you outlined, the way you're going to help manage this particular project, I believe is going to hopefully make this project successful. I also want to address just a couple things that some of the residents said tonight, because I want to, I think it's important that everybody knows that I'm, I think all of us as trustees sit up here and listen very intently to what all of you said. This, there's, this could be in a different location. Maybe a location in downtown Wilmatt is a better location, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about this location, and I hope at some point, we could be talking about another location. But some people are concerned about transportation, distance to walk. So I've spent a fair amount of time walking this property over the last couple days. I have a dog, so luckily I can walk. And there's a couple things I wanted people to know. So I live about six-tenths of a mile from the Wilmatt train station. When I worked in the city, I walked to the train station every day. Okay? Every day. And there is transportation and grocery stores six-tenths of a mile from this property. I also watch people get off the train at the Wilmatt train station, and I talk to people. And there are people who get off the train and walk six-tenths of a mile, if not more, to get home. People that live at 17th and Lake, people that live at 17th and Highland, people that live at, in Kettleworth Gardens, walk to the, to the Kettleworth train station. So while I hear some concerns about this not being in the best location, many of us, many of us in this community do that walk every day to get to their job or to get to public transportation. I wish we had better transportation, and I think we're going to learn from this. I think some of the comments that the trustees said, which is, we're going to learn that maybe we need more public transportation. But that's not a reason to deny this. And then finally, I'd just like to say that, like trustee Plunkett, I also spoke to the alderman in Evanston. I actually did not. I reached out to her, and she provided me with an email, so I don't want to. But I've spent a lot of time talking to the people, both in favor and not in favor, of this particular project. And I've learned a lot, but in, about just people's concern. But I think I would agree that we want this to be successful. We, this is really important to all of us in this community. This is yes in our backyard for every person who's living in this community. It really is. And I was impressed by the number of people that spoke tonight that actually do live less than a half of a mile. I kept track of it, less than a half a mile from this property, and were in support. So I appreciate that. So because of those reasons, I am in support of this project. Thank you.
All right, trustee Wolf. All right, trustee Wolf.
Thank you to everyone who came out tonight to speak. It really is important to have input from the community. And thank you to HODC. I think you guys did a great job with your presentation, with answering all of our questions. And again, I think President Blinsky and my fellow trustees have done a very nice and eloquent job of, of explaining all this. So, I won't go on too long. But I, I also think it is important to look at the PUD process, because the reason it is set up the way it is, is sometimes, there are things that if you looked at just zoning or just appearance review, which I used to be on, you'd have certain considerations. But this takes into account the way the building fits into the area, and not just, what are the setbacks supposed to be and that sort of thing. And I thought that one graphic that we had that was used from the other project around the corner was very helpful in looking at what is going on, what the context is. And when you look at that, the floor area ratio isn't so out of line. The height is right in there. And I think that's really important, because it, I think it does fit in the community. And as one of my fellow trustees said, I think people will drive by and, you know, it'll just fit right into the community. So, I think there's a reason for the variances. I think it's worth taking a close look, because we don't want to give variances lightly, and I don't think we did in this case. But I will say that I am glad that you guys are going after the green certification. I think that's, that's an important thing. And the stormwater, I know it's just meeting the requirements, but I, I think maybe the bioswale is above and beyond, and certainly, the, the affordable housing is a big benefit. So, I think it's a great project. I wish you the best of luck.
Trustee Kersman.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for coming out tonight, and thank you to everyone who has reached out and shared their opinion and been engaged in our village with this issue. Much of my comments have been covered by my colleagues. So, I'm going to ad lib a little bit, and it'll be briefer than I expected, out of respect for time. But the PUD process is one, it's an acquired taste. And there is some amount of subjectivity with it, and I think trustee Dodd, you spoke well to it. And what's unique a little bit about our circumstance is, for that intersection in the heart of our village, in the geographic center, where two arteries hit, we've not had one, but two PUDs. And so, I am sensitive to the fact that, and at least trying to be sensitive to the fact that there's a little bit of a makeover on a real critical part of our town. And that wasn't necessarily the byproduct of a process coming from our comprehensive plan. So, I just try to think those things through. And it's having concern, but I want to be clear that concern is not the same as fear. There is no reason to fear. And I like how trustee Plunkett spoke to it, that we all have shared stakeholding. Certainly, we've heard, and therefore, you know, there might be some amount of risk with this, but it's borne by everyone. And so, we're together in trying, in wanting this to work. I think it's been articulated by those in opposition, nearby neighbors perhaps, about what their concerns are, and what they see as risk. What hasn't been spoken about is that the risk goes to others as well, including the staunchest advocates for affordable housing. If this doesn't go well, the future of the affordable housing issue would be impacted in the community. And so, you know, I, I think it's probably just fact that, or, let me, let me say that again. I think it's possible that there are some advocates who feel so strongly on the issue that any zoning variance would have been okay to create affordable units. And I'm not exactly with that, but I do see affordable housing as a huge public benefit. I'm less compelled by the others. My gift to everyone tonight is to not speak on stormwater, but I do believe that President Blinsky summarized it well. And I also would just point out that it would really help if we had agenda item 3.27 passed in two weeks' time. But, so, I would like to just transition a little bit into saying that I'm keenly aware that we're addressing affordable housing by adding it to one of our most affordable neighborhoods already. I'm keenly aware that there are buildings, as trustee Dodd pointed out, that are in even better locations going up without affordable units. And so, for me, to weigh on the, the balancing act that others have outlined very well about the PUD process, does the afford, does the public benefit, you know, on balance, go with the variances being checked? For me, it was, are we doing check-the-box affordable housing? Or are we providing quality opportunities for people to live, work, contribute, and thrive in our community? And so, to make that determination, I took a similar approach to trustee Dodd. I decided I'd try to walk the proverbial mile in the shoes of a resident living in 1925 Willmet Avenue, as well as the experience of neighbors living nearby. I observed two morning rush hours and portions of two evening rush hours, developed some of the thoughts that I asked on earlier today. And I tried to visualize the impact, not just, the impact of not just one PUD, but the two PUDs in combination. In particular, I was most keen in my observations about how the new traffic patterns might impact the residents of the Pin Oak Development. I also tried to walk a mile in the shoes of residents, of future residents of 1925 Willmet Avenue, because I've had some personal experience with that. I've worked several years juggling several childcare jobs at near minimum wage in San Francisco in its early gentrifying years, and I saw neighborhood after neighborhood where I, near where I grew up, closed its doors to people like me. And so, in terms of walking in shoes, I tried to be more literal in the present, and I walked to the Treasure Island, took me 10 minutes. I walked to the metro station in 18 and a half minutes. From Jewel to 1925 in 16 minutes, albeit not carrying or pushing groceries. My takeaway from these efforts, that while the location and the format of the affordable housing are not ideal for me, it would indeed be a viable opportunity for good people to do good things in our community. So, maybe it was a narrower margin than I might have expected, but I did come to see the public benefit of the affordable housing as meeting on balance, as meriting on balance, the zoning relief being sought. I too will be voting yes.
Any further discussion from any of the trustees?
So, before we vote, I would like to thank Mr. Koenig and everyone who came out tonight, everyone who participated in this process. It is one of the reasons why Willmet is a wonderful place. We care, we all care about our community. Madam Clerk, please call the role on the motion.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. Motion carries, the request has been approved. Trustee Sullivan, back to the land use committee.
Just note that I did not go over the timeline. So, that was the last item on the finance committee. I will also take items 6.2, the finance committee, and all items were approved on consent.
Okay. Administration Committee, trustee Dodd.
All items on consent.
Municipal Services, trustee Wolf.
All remaining items recovered on consent.
Right. Public Safety Committee, trustee Kersman.
All items covered on consent.
Judiciary Committee, trustee Plunkett.
All items on consent.
Okay, there are no reports from our special committees. There's no additional new business to discuss. Item 8 is pending matters, yeah, I got it. Pending matters refer to standing committees, there's no actions to take there. So, I will now return to item 2, which is public comment. I deferred that at the beginning of the meeting. During public comment, we ask if there's any member of the audience who would like to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda. So, is there any remaining member of the audience who would like to address us on a matter which is not on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to item 9, which is adjournment. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Stormwater.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We stand adjourned at 11:12.